I know we have several guests here tonight to help honor our new board members and we welcome you and all others who are in attendance. I will call the meeting to order and the first item of business is to canvass the results of the June 12th trustee runoff election. Mr. Tom Carr, our attorney.
........................... There we go. Board members, Madam President, Chancellor, you have before you a proposed resolution you should have received prior to, well, maybe possibly today, the canvassing results, the total votes, and I would recommend that you review that resolution, that motion that some of you have before you, and adopt same, or read it.
And at your place is a copy of the appropriate motion if someone would like to volunteer to move approval.
Just a minute. Mr. Carr, do they need to see this first before they vote on that?
Yes, ma'am. I wasn't aware if they hadn't seen it, but yes, ma'am. Should be no surprise. At this time, you're acting as a canvassing authority for the Tarrant County College District and Mr. Greenhill and Mr. Carter are not official with regard to this particular action. You have before you the vote totals. I believe the first page is a summary page with the vote totals where Mr. Jenkins received a total of 1,812 votes and Mr. O.K. Carter received 1,963 votes. And there should be 21 separate precincts with the totals associated with them on the following pages, but the summary page at the front should give you the information with regard to the grand totals of each of those 21 precincts.
Actually, what I see is a page for each precinct. I don't have a summary.
I do have the summary that I can share with you.
Is there a different sheet, Reginald? Yeah, they need that one. Give everybody a copy of that one. Mr. Carr, would you read those and while you're getting copies of that page, just read that right quick for them?
Okay.
The summary?
Oh, the summary?
The summary page?
Yes, sir.
I gave Ms. Van der Grift my summary. Basically, the summary is that of the total number of votes cast, there were 3,775 votes.
Get behind the microphone, please, because we'll be recorded.
Okay. There were a total of, and this is in the Tarrant County College District, single-member district number five, on the June 12, 2010 runoff election, there were a grand total of 3,775 votes cast. Of that number, 1,812 were cast, or 48 percent for Mr. John Jenkins. He appeared first on the ballot. Second on the ballot was Mr. O.K. Carter, and he received 1,963 voter, votes, excuse me, or 52 percent of the total number of votes cast in that election. There were early votes identified, some 2,382 early votes, and 1,393 votes cast on the day of the election. It also identifies undervotes, 207 undervotes, and for y'all's benefit and information, an undervote is when an individual received a ballot and did not vote for either individual. I believe we were conducting that election jointly with Mansfield ISD and the City of Arlington, and so depending on the voter's eligibility, where they resided, they could have been voting both in the City of Arlington election and the single-member district five election, and they only chose to vote in the Arlington election and not the Tarrant County College District trustee election, thereby causing what is called an undervote. A ballot was actually cast, but no votes were received associated with that ballot.
Any questions of Mr. Carr? If someone would look at the paper, mark "Canvas Motion." Yes, please.
I would make, I would make a motion that upon review of the election returns for the June 12, 2010 runoff election, that we as the Tarrant County College District canvassing authority hereby certify the following results. For single-member trustee district number five, John Jenkins received 1,812 votes and O.K. Carter received 1,963 votes.
Is there a second? Mr. Hudson seconds the motion. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. There is a resolution in your packet declaring your results of the June 12 trustee runoff election, and we need a motion to approve that. Is there any presentation to be made? If you'll scroll down to that on your screen, you may read it before you move to approve it.
Again, Madam President, I would caution, Mr. Greenhill and Mr. Carter should not vote on this resolution.
Probably shouldn't have voted on the other matter either. You're not legal yet.
I didn't vote on the other matter. Record shows me that.
I'm sorry. You want us to read it?
And then a motion to approve it.
I'm sorry, I've lost my reading. My mic broke.
Turn your mic on.
Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees Resolution in order declaring results of runoff election for district five. Whereas on June 12, 2010, registered voters cast ballots in the runoff election to elect a trustee to a single member district five of the Tarrant County College District.
Push your microphone. Push your black button. There you go.
Whereas the precinct, whereas the precinct returns have been canvassed by this Board of Trustees as an official canvassing board, said returns have been officially certified. Therefore, be it ordered and resolved by the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County, Tarrant County College District that O.K. Carter is declared duly elected to a single-member district five of the Board of Trustees for Tarrant County College District for a six-year term for said position or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. And be it further ordered that O.K. Carter be issued a certificate of election and take the oath of office as prescribed by law. The above order being read, it was moved by?
I make a motion.
I make a motion. Do we hear a second?
Okay.
That same do pass.
Okay. The same do pass. Thereupon, the question being called, the members of the board voted.
Okay. All those in favor approving the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote of five.
At this time, Ms. Appleman, I would recommend and suggest that each of our newly-elected trustees sign their statement of office and then take their oath of office, and they'll receive their certificate, I believe, later on this evening.
All right. It is...
Is there a statement for me to sign?
There, I think there is. Maria, do we have a...
I'll go up there first. Sure.
It's coming. Maria's got it.
And I'd like to introduce the audience to Amelda Parrott, my boss. She's going to swear me in. Thirty years at Law Snaker and at Haynes and Moon. Come on, you're going to swear me in. I got to sign a statement first, apparently, and we'll get this job going. Yeah. Now, where do you want her? Right there? Yeah, that's good. You want me to sign it first? Okay. All right. I'll sign my signature. I'm just, I just got up here.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I'm sorry.
What? Okay, you don't, yeah, come on, you don't remember. She's going to swear me in.
I'm sorry. I thought you said I had to come up, I had to sign.
No, no, she's going to swear me in. Well, I'll just, you can join me swearing twice. I will repeat after you.
I, William D. Greenhill, do solemnly swear...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the Office of College Trustee...
For Tarrant County College of the State of Texas.
Of Tarrant County College of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
So help me God. Thank you. I'm very excited to be an elected member of this Board of Directors, Board of Trustees. As the college presidents know, I have been out to all of the colleges and I am so impressed. I've met the, what do you call it, the kilt, the, I'm learning the words, too, the vice presidents and the deans, and it's a wonderful group of people. And I also want to recognize my team back here, is Amelda, of course, my wife, and Greenhill, please stand up, and Marty Craddock and Marsha Wright. They were my political team, and John Stevenson, who is not here, and some others, but I really appreciate the opportunity to serve a college.
I'd like to introduce my longtime friend, Judge Tom Corbin, also the former mayor of Mansfield. They tell me that you, they'd like for you to be right here, sir. Facing this way, a little bit more turned. I'm directing people already. Thank you, sir. That looked a little like my campaign. Let me say, by authority vested me as a judicial officer for the State of Texas and by virtue of the order declaring the results of the election tonight, and in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, let me ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, O.K. Carter... I, O.K. Carter... Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear... That I will faithfully execute... That I will faithfully execute... The duties of the Office of College Trustee... The duties of the Office of College Trustee... For Tarrant County College of the State of Texas. For Tarrant County College in the State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability... And will to the best of my ability... Preserve, protect, and defend... Preserve, protect, and defend... The Constitution and laws of the United States... The Constitution and laws of the United States... And of this state. And of this state. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you. Would not be. Be used me to introduce my running mate, Donna Derovich. Please stand up, please. Mrs. Carter. I keep, I keep telling her that Carter is so much easier to pronounce than Derovich, and I thank a couple of other people, Larry Meeker and Dick Malik. You guys would stand up. Thank you so much. I just am passing to, but I'd like to thank Andy Nguyen, who provided, he's not here tonight, but he provided a great deal of assistance during this campaign. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, and all of the others who participated. We have an opportunity now to hear comments from visitors, and I have two cards. First speaker is Mr. L.H. I would ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please.
If I was required to remember it, it'd be a lot shorter than that. The very first chairman, or president, was a good friend of mine, and he was in that position for a very long time, and when he retired, he wrote a statement which is, I have a framed copy of it in my home regarding this college, and he said that the most important thing about this college is not bricks and mortar, but the students. And that has to be thought about in every motion that you make and every direction that you take. It's not bricks and mortar that makes a college, it's the students. And I want to say, whether it's 200 or 300 million dollars spent on a Bluff campus, that's an obscene number, and it hurts the students. Who knows how many young people that would educate or give them a trade with which they can support themselves and their families from now on? Because you can't undo learning how to be an electrician. I mean, you either are or you aren't. And I think to some extent, when we talk about those numbers, the multi, multi, multi-million dollar numbers, it seems to me that the purpose of the college has been forgotten. Thereby, the quality of the teachers, or professors, is paramount. The teachers should be paid more, in my opinion, rather than building, more buildings, pay the teachers more. It's not the management of the staff that is primary, nor this board. The students are primary. That's why we're on here. During the De La Garza days with the college, the board did almost everything he asked for, at an untold cost to the students. The board runs the college, not the administration, and if we're going to cut, let's cut expenses in administration, not in the teachers. Adjunct teachers won't cut it. You need full-time teachers who have a contract for a period of time, and they've got, but I want us to pay the highest at any duty college in the United States it's paying, so we attract the very, very, very best, because they're our students who are going to live in Fort Worth and live productively. And the more we teach them, the more productive they'll be. And I could talk for hours, and I have talked for days and days and days back when I was trying to get the college started. I got 15,000 signatures, and I would give at least three speeches a day, average, and it was a fight to get this thing started. Let's keep it going in the right direction, aimed and focused on the students. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker is Steve Murren.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Steve Murren, I'm here in Tarrant County, and I'll be pretty brief, I think. First, I think I should, I was around when Tarrant County College was trying to be birthed into Tarrant County. It was, it was an incredible battle. The Chamber of Commerce, the big leaders in Fort Worth, the chairmans of some of the biggest banks in town were not for it. They didn't want another tax burden on the Tarrant County citizens. And the first proposed junior college was a relatively modest, small northeast campus. And I was around then, I was just out of college, because I'm a little younger, but I can, I can assure you, and some of you that are almost as old as me can probably remember, but if it hadn't been for Larry Meeker, there wouldn't have been a Tarrant County Junior College, not even close to today's form. There certainly wouldn't have been four original campuses, three original, and then the downtown thing that came along. And it was just, it was an amazing uphill battle. He had some of the big leaders in Fort Worth who he went to see, who should have been standing up in front, would swivel their chairs around and say, I said I'll need to, I have a phone call to make. And it was a tough battle, and he got it done. As I recall, the one good guy that stood up in front and kind of defied his board on the Chamber of Commerce was J.A. Lee Johnson, Jr., back in those days. Anyway, aside from that, just reflecting how we got here, because I think it's important to know that it didn't just happen. It wasn't, it was finding those, those signatures to get the, to get the proposal up, and then fighting the bureaucracy of Tarrant County Commissioners Court. They had to finally get one guy to terminate his fishing afternoon and come down and open the courthouse so they could meet the deadline to get the petition in the hands of the county so that it could go forward. Otherwise, it would, it would never happen. Anyway, for priorities just going forward, looking back is great, but going forward, I just reflect on what Mr. Meeker said about that. I think assembling the most effective teaching staff whose knowledge and teaching skills best fit the needs of Tarrant County citizens, who are motivated to continue their education for their purposes of job skill advancement and personal self-fulfillment also, but I don't think most Tarrant County College students are continuing their college careers for the social atmosphere. I really, I think a quality environment is certainly called for, but as a taxpayer, I would like to see a supreme effort on the part of this administration, and I would like to see a strong, steady guidance from this elected board to ensure that the funding that we taxpayers provide is used to find the most effective professors available and then secure their involvement in the system and safeguard the security of their tenure so that when our students say, I want to improve my stature in life in Tarrant County, they know that when they go and sacrifice their time to go to class and spend their time to, to go to the classes for learning, that they'll have a professor and, and teaching aides, and even anything else that will enhance the atmosphere where they can effectively learn and improve their ability to bring home paycheck. Because I think that's, that's a priority of most of the Tarrant County College students. I don't think fraternities should be in order. I don't think that kind of social atmosphere should be encouraged. I think they come to, because they want to be able to take care of their families in a more effective way, and I think everybody's priorities ought to be oriented toward the teaching staff, the most effective teaching staff and teaching aides that are available in the whole deal. And I'm kind of like Larry, I don't complain about the tax rate. The funding is, is there for a reason. If it's used effectively, Tarrant County will continue to be the most enviable county in, in the nation, and it's because of the people and the people are bootstrapping themselves up. Thank you very much.
Those are the only two cards I have. No others? Okay. We'll move on to item number six, which will certainly is a good segue to the gentleman's comments, student access and success on our newest campus.
Dr. Fullerson is coming to the microphone, and she and her people have prepared, I haven't seen it, but I don't have to see it. I'm on Trinity River Campus all the time, and I know what it's likely to be. I really, I want to say that I really appreciate the comments from both Mr. Meeker and Mr. Murren, and to let you know that as a leader of this institution, I hear you, and also want you to know that the staff and the faculty are also focused, keenly focused, on that if you haven't had the opportunity to read the TCC Vision 2015, which is our strategic plan, I would ask you to do that. It's on the website, and I say to everybody with whom I speak that that entire plan can be summarized in four words, and that is student access and success. That's what we're all about, and that's why I hope you will agree as you watch us, that that's where our focus will be. So thank you so much for those comments. Dr. Fullerson, it's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor. Chairman Appleman and members of the board, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Special thanks to Mr. Carter and to Mr. Greenhill. We're going to initiate you right tonight. On behalf of the faculty and staff and administration and the students of Trinity River Campus, I'm pleased to introduce Year One in Review. It's a video built on our campus that incorporates the philosophical commitment of the campus, and it has glimpses of some of our accomplishments, some of our fun, and as few of our mistakes as we've been able to edit. The faces and the unscripted voices that you will hear represent all who have worked together to make Year One such a meaningful experience for us. As you watch and hear, I hope you will, what you see will verify that Trinity River Campus, like the sister campuses, is very much focused on what the chancellor has said, student access and success. We appreciate the honor of being part of the history of TCC's fifth campus, and we hope you enjoy what you see. hope you enjoy what you see.
If it doesn't work, I'll dance.
If it doesn't work, Maria Shelton is in the room.
In Fort Worth, Texas, in the heart of our nation's fastest-growing city, where culture meets cowboy, something significant is happening for citizens who have been too often underserved. What you're about to see explains our admittedly biased view of what the significant is, why it is happening, and how it is happening. The what is simple. Trinity River Campus, like its sister campuses in the district, is changing lives, both of students and of those who serve the students.
The Trinity River Campus has been such an inspiration to me. My experiences here have been like no other.
Now, as a student of UNT, the Trinity River Campus has really given me the tools to succeed on the four-year level.
My experiences here have helped me grow so much.
And to me, I've never seen a more dedicated staff and faculty who not only serves students, but really strives to give back to the community.
The why relates to the board's vision. You have given us a beautiful building located in an area of great need. You've allowed us to hire an amazing faculty and staff to serve a primarily underserved population.
Trinity River colleagues, your ears!
Now, I say goodbye to all our company. T R I.
Here we are soon.
N I T Y.
Why? Because we like you.
R I B E R.
The how is the focus of the rest of our short video. Trinity River Campus opened with a clear vision of what mattered in higher education, and that vision is captured in all of our hallmarks. Tonight, we will focus on just two hallmarks: service and community outreach, interdisciplinary collaboration. And if you see an occasional set of Mickey ears, don't worry, we can't help ourselves when it comes to Disney. A hallmark of service and community outreach at Trinity River Campus includes volunteerism and service learning. First, volunteerism. We have established the expectation that all employees, either as individuals or as members of a unit or department, will participate in service activities.
From the get-go, we knew that it was very important for us to embrace the young ones in our community if we were going to make sure they made it to college. And so we started by adopting two elementary schools, Charles E. Nash Elementary and IAM Terrell Elementary. Our faculty, our staff, some of our faculty members have gone over there and taught science lessons, have worked with them on math problems. We had a Math Olympics program. At IAM Terrell, we focused a lot on reading, on reading skills, on the importance of that.
We each had an individual child that we stayed with for the whole four months. And we would go into the library.
And we would be able to read with the student one-on-one, and the students we had were not at the level they should be at the second-grade level, so they were able to get that one-on-one attention from us that they wouldn't be able to get from the teacher, because she has to pay attention to twenty students rather than just the one.
We worked with TCC Trinity River Campus last year for the first time, and it was quite a treat on two different occasions. First of all, for our major fundraiser, the Friends of the River Party in the Plaza. Our second project with TCC Trinity River Campus was a little bit more far-reaching. Last year, we started, we initiated the program, Project Daffodil. It's a project where we're looking for community groups, organizations, schools, even individuals and families to plant heirloom Texas daffodil bulbs along the river.
It was really great. We participated in the annual AIDS Walk to Benefiting AIDS Outreach Center. We raised over sixteen hundred dollars for the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure.
We've been very impressed with the response from Tarrant County College Trinity River Campus for all the help and that they provided for us. We've had staff members, instructors, and professors come join us, working on math projects, working with our kids, tutoring our kids. One of your professors came and joined us for four consecutive weeks, teaching earth science, and that contributed to the high science scores on our test of academic knowledge and skills.
And that focus on outreach, I really didn't notice the impact or believe in it until I had them first come on campus. And when those little boys walked into our rotunda, and their little heads went up, and they were just in awe of the facility. And when these two little boys were sitting in a classroom in East Fork, looking out upon the Trinity River, and the little boy nudged the other and said, hey, we're in college. Right then, I knew there was something real important to how we treat our students when they come on campus.
The heart of our commitment to service, however, is service learning.
One of our hallmarks here, obviously, is service learning, and it's important to the student, because it gives them an understanding of what's going on in the real world and connecting that to what's going on in their textbooks.
Sometimes, the new desire to learn is ignited through interdisciplinary collaborations, the second hallmark we will present tonight.
What a wonderful privilege it was to work with Trish Barker on this interdisciplinary collaboration project. One of the things that we did overall was look at the fruit that can be developed when two disciplines that seemingly or definitely come together.
I never really thought, until I was sitting next to Tyson and working for Trinity River Campus, that, oh my goodness, interdisciplinary collaboration, how wonderful, there is another class that could benefit from what my students are doing, and I could definitely benefit from the expertise of Tyson's students and Tyson McMillan himself.
Continuing education, teamed with the Interpreting for the Deaf Program to sponsor the Imagination Celebration for hundreds of deaf students in Texas.
What I find great about the interpreting program here is the teachers are a lot of fun, and you learn a lot, and you get immersed into the culture.
This collaboration is also developing postgraduate training for licensed professional signers, and a college for kids for hearing impaired students in Tarrant County.
Our consortium consists of twenty-five community junior and technical colleges across this northeast quadrant of the state, who, along with the University of North Texas, provide professional and voluntary opportunities for faculty members and administrators of our member institutions. More recently, the Trinity River Campus has joined that group, and I'm pleased to say that we, as a consortium, have been here several times already, serving the needs of the immediate community, and the regional community, and the statewide community in higher education.
We cannot conclude our Year One without mention of two pieces of art we have added to the campus this year. TCC's beautiful star logo is a treasure of Trinity River Campus. Located in the one-stop shop, this art combines TCC's star with the words of students, coaches, iconic leaders, all echo sentiments of the hallmarks. Make sure to make time to see it. Another addition to the campus art collection is the Commitment Campus. Designed by Angel Fernandez and Monica Lee, it features all the hallmarks, signatures of staff, faculty, and administrators, all pledging their commitment to the hallmarks. An unshakable focus of student learning, service and community engagement, strong, open communication, professional and personal growth, multicultural competence and language acquisition, interdisciplinary collaboration, and wellness.
Tarrant County College Trinity River Campus is not only amazing because of its beauty and location, it's amazing because of its people.
I will always have a place in my heart for this campus.
Trinity River Campus, that's my campus.
I'd recommend TRC to anyone.
I'm glad I decided to go back to school after eight years, here at this campus.
TRC, it's my campus.
You're just lucky we didn't go through all our archives. We're so proud of what we're doing, we make pictures every day. In closing, Monica Lee is going to come up and give you a booklet that has enrollment and demographic information and summaries of our hours of service and outreach. As you review the numbers in the booklet, rest assured that we're putting in place a number of strategies to improve student success. Those are going to be published, and are soon to be printed, year-long calendar of events that will include success seminars for students, a list of faculty-developed tutoring activities, a series of professional development events centered on multicultural competence, and a roster of speakers and student club events. When we get that calendar together, you'll get a copy, and we expect you to come and see us. I want to let you know that in this audience tonight, aside from Monica and the technical men who did the work on this, there are administrators and faculty and staff, many who have never been to a board meeting before. So you guys are not the only ones being initiated. We've got some more people here. Trinity River people, stand up so we can say hi. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, there is. This is a question across the board. You know, I'm wondering, you're doing such good things in math and science, and I'm wondering, have we ever really looked at those departments to see if things could be done better? Where are we at, where we are at with these particular subjects, critical subjects? I mean, if a student can master math, he can do anything as far as a career. So I'm wondering where we are as far as our math and science departments. I have heard from some students that what happens is a lot of the teachers, because of the remedial math that has to take place, a lot of the good teachers are taken to teach the remedial, which leaves very little teachers over in the upper-level math courses. So I'm wondering where, what we're doing with that. I mean, maybe I don't need an answer now, but I would like to know the types of initiatives that are taking place within the math and the science fields, critical fields.
Mrs., may I answer first, and then Dr. Heda can tell you specifically what's happening on Trinity River Campus. But when she does that, all the other four are going to want to tell you what's happening on their campus. So let me start by telling you that we are keenly focused on that. I think I've mentioned to the board before that we were going to apply for a grant from the Higher Education Coordinating Board. Well, I'm pleased to announce that we received it. The grant is for one point five million dollars, and it is specifically for us to look at how we teach basics, reading, writing, and math. Now, that addresses one part of the equation. The other part of your question about what happens to the higher-level math courses and science courses, let me assure you that on all five campuses, what you've heard is not true. There always is enough faculty to teach those upper-level courses. I've never even heard that before. Maybe a student had some individual situation that he or she had to contend with, and to the extent that we would have known about that, we could have helped the student get in the proper course, but that is not an issue. The bigger issue for us is what we do with the students who come to us who are not prepared for math. And that's what that one point five million dollar grant is going to do, is going to help us position ourselves to be more proactive, if you will, in dealing with those students. And Dr. Wells and Dr. Gates Black are working very closely with the campus presidents so that at the beginning of the fall semester, there are going to be some major changes in how we operate along those areas.
Great.
Now, let Dr. Ferguson tell you specifically if there is anything else she needs to add to this, but all of the campuses are keenly focused on student success in those areas.
And before you speak, just one more, one more thought.
All right.
I think it is the lack of accessibility to these upper-level math instructors. I don't know, but I know that it is a concern. And again, I just, whatever we can do, whatever we can do.
Well, let me ask Dr. Ferguson and the other four presidents to respond to that. I've never heard that before. I've never heard about students having not enough access to higher-level math and science courses.
I haven't heard that either, but I would be glad to answer the question of anyone in the community who has that question. I know that the other campuses would feel the same way about that.
Yeah.
The other four of you, is that an issue on a campus? No?
Well, there is a specific campus, but of course, that's neither here nor there. But again, the efforts, students struggle with math, and I just want to make sure that we provide them with all the help we're able to provide them with. I guess that is my concern.
And that is our goal, absolutely.
Good, thank you.
I will just say, I have Brian Stewart here in the wings to speak. He's going to speak before the legislature tomorrow about mod math. It is a brand-new way that our campuses are developing programs that are very specific to student needs in math. It's very compressed, and they move quickly through it. I don't know if you have enough--
Bring him up, sure, bring him.
Okay.
That's fine. Come on, Dr. Stewart. You can practice on us for tomorrow.
I don't know, this might be a tougher group. I'm very honored tomorrow to testify before Senator Zephryle, in her committee.
Get the name right before tomorrow.
Test us. Yeah. I have to tell you, I was watching her, they were doing some testimony today on finance, and I got really nervous looking at a board like this sitting in front of them. But I've been asked to testify on some of the things Tarrant County College is doing positively in student success and development education. We have a number of initiatives. Mod math is one of them, that our completion percentage is very positive, and I won't bore you with stats, I have them here if you'd like. I have eight minutes to talk to them tomorrow, and I had to write about a twelve-page written testimony before that. So I'm excited and nervous to speak to that group, because I think we are doing some positive things. I will certainly highlight our Achieving the Dream that we are in the process of getting, also our Student Success Course, and then our new requirements related to students immediately getting into development education. So I do think we're doing some very good things that will impact our numbers in development education very soon.
Tell them basically how mod math works.
Sure. Typically, most community colleges have three developmental classes that are three hours long. What our math faculty did over a five-year period was look at those courses and look at the learning outcomes in those courses. And what you may not be aware of is, in math, we traditionally reteach material. We would reteach factoring, for instance, in one course, and then reteach it again in the other. If you're a history teacher and you teach the Civil War, you test students over the Civil War, and then you move on to Reconstruction, right? Well, you don't retest students back over on the Civil War, you test them on Reconstruction. Now, the Civil War is an intricate part of what happened in Reconstruction, and that's what the math faculty realized. They decided to take out the repetition in the course. And then we decided, how are we going to teach it? Well, students will get in a math class and get eight to nine to ten weeks in the course and start struggling. And one or two things will happen. Either they'll buck up, go to the tutoring labs, go see their teacher and get through it, or they'll drop the class and focus on another discipline. So what we did with mod math is, let's break it into nine one-hour segments. So for five weeks, you're doing this material. At the end of five weeks, you take two tests and you pass it. And you're not responsible for that material, other than, like the Civil War, it will keep coming up as you do subsequent materials. So we feel like mod math moves students through the semester faster. They may only get two mods out of the way, but that's still two-thirds of a sixteen-week course, where if they're in that sixteen-week course, they would have not gotten any success. So that's the beauty of mod math. We've done a lot of other things. We have had two grants by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board that's recognized mod math, one for seventy-five thousand and one for fifty. And I'd be remiss if I didn't have Jackie Mackey stand up and thank her for all her hard work for that as well. I'd love to talk more about mod math. Dr. Carey and I started it in about nineteen ninety-eight at the southeast campus, and it was very successful there, and then we brought it back here the last four years.
Happy to hear that, though. Happy to hear that.
And while you're standing there, Dr. Stewart will be accompanied by Jackie Mackey. Jackie, Jackie, for our two new board members, Jackie is our grants guru. We've had great success under her leadership in assisting all of us. She can't write all of the grants, but she's always there to help us, and the two of them will be in Austin tomorrow, testifying.
And I'll know the senator's name, I promise.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
I just want to say that I was at the Trinity Campus when the Kids for College came in with their green shirts, and I've got two green shirts. I was thinking it was one of the other campuses, too. It's a marvelous program.
May I just say that unless administrators know of specific student concerns and issues, they cannot be proactive in correcting them. So I would suggest that anyone who is aware of a student that's having an issue, bring that to the attention of the administrative staff, because that is why they are there for the students.
Right.
And every student, each and every student is important. And I believe that any student who makes their issue known will get the necessary assistance. who makes their issue known will get the necessary assistance to move forward. I have that confidence in our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison.
All right. We'll move on to item number seven. Every year at this meeting, we elect officers, a president, a vice president, a secretary, an assistant secretary. So that is our duty this evening. I would open the floor for nominations for the position of president of the board.
May I ask a question, please? I can't nominate, it has to be individually, or can I nominate everybody for a particular position at one time?
I think we need to do it individually.
Individually, okay. I do want to make a motion. Joe Hudson is president.
Second.
Those in favor of Mr. Hudson to be selected as president of the board, please raise your hand. Okay, that's a majority vote of four. Congratulations. Why don't you and I switch seats, and you will preside for the remainder of the meeting. Before I go, thank you. It's been my honor and privilege and pleasure to serve in this capacity, and we're off in good directions, and I know you'll give Mr. Hudson and whoever else has elected your support and cooperation as you have in the past two years that I've been here. So thank you.
If you start out asking a lot of questions, this is where you wind up.
Mr. President, I do want to make a motion. Bill Greenhill for vice president.
Okay. Do you have a motion for Bill? Are there other nominations?
No.
Okay, all in favor of Bill Greenhill for vice president?
Yes, I would like to nominate Christian Van De Grof as vice president.
Okay. Do we have other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask a procedural issue? How do we proceed with a slate of candidates?
My assumption is that if you have two nominees, you vote on both of them, and the one that gets the majority vote wins. Is that not correct?
Yeah, so it's Mr. Greenhill.
I think I would like to defer to my colleague over here to be vice president. I think that's an appropriate thing to happen. So I withdraw. I appreciate being nominated, but I withdraw. That will make that easier.
Thank you. This is a surprise to me. I guess I would just like to say that I have served the district for eight years. I think, believe I'm very committed, and I'd be honored to serve as vice chair and would take the job very seriously.
Okay. All in favor of Christine? Let me know by show of hands. The next position is secretary. Nominations for secretary?
Yes. I want to make a motion for secretary. O.K. Carter for secretary. Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I recant that, take that back?
You can withdraw your motion if you like.
Can I do that?
Certainly.
I was about to nominate you back.
Mr. Greenhill is secretary.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, are there other nominations? Under Robert's rules of orders, as I read it, you don't need a second to motions, and I'm not sure whether this board has put that provision in its rulings or not. I've not been able to find that.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, we have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor for Mr. Greenhill as secretary?
Aye.
And I think we have one more assistant secretary.
I would like to nominate somebody. I would like to nominate Dr. Gwen Morrison.
Okay.
Thank you, Christian, that's so kind of you, but I would respectfully.
I'd like to nominate Robin Winnett.
Robin Winnett, are there other nominations?
I would nominate O.K. Carter for assistant.
Are you withdrawing your name?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of O.K. Carter?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proceeding to the next item on the agenda. Under Texas Code 5571-0071, Texas Government for Real Property, and Texas Code Section 551 dot 072, Texas Government Code, we will convene in closed session, and then we will reconvene for open meeting in just a little bit. We will discuss the pending litigation concerning real estate and legal advice concerning the radio shackles. And we shall return.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.[1028.32]
No?
Particular popular group and there's no clicks, it's all just completely different and diverse and you're not alone and...
Am I talking? I hear it out here, I can hear that.
That's dark in here.
Can you hear the buzzing? Just stopped.
Test, test. Test, 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 test.
Not enough.
Test, 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 test. Test one, two, three.
What about the mains?
Test, 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 that sounds better. That's probably where it should be. That's good, that is good. One, two, three.
Okay. You guys having trouble hearing me?
(laughing).
There's no action on the closed meeting. The next item before us is amendment to the Radio Shack lease agreement. Is there a motion to authorize the chancellor to sign this agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this board adopt the agreement to partici-- well, I'm sorry, in the-- to adopt the amendment to the lease. I was looking at the wrong agreement, so, yes.
You'll authorize me to sign?
Yeah, that's what I said, authorize you to sign it. Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion of a second, is there discussion?
If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Next item is consideration and approval for Veridian TIRZ participation agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I don't-- where's Mark McClendon? We didn't give them a warning, we just came right back in and people didn't have time. Where's Mark?
I know, I know.
I'm sorry, we'll have to do better next time, too.
Yeah, I'll watch what I'm doing next time. Sorry about that.
One of those black horns like they have in South Africa.
(laughing). Can't I tell Mark McClendon we're ready?
Casey Bernard.
Okay, all right. I will tell you while Mark is coming that you have information. First of all, we have consideration of the participation, your participation, the Veridian TIRZ participation project in the city of Arlington. And we have the officials from Arlington to make that presentation. I will just call them up while Mark is coming. They're here. And I'm so sorry, sir, I don't remember your name. Mark has it.
Chancellor Hadley, I appreciate that. My name is Bruce Payne, I'm the--
Bruce, yes, Bruce, thank you.
Economic Development Manager for the city of Arlington. And I can just go ahead and get started on it--
Sure, go right ahead.
Unless you all want an initial presentation.
Mark, do you have some opening remarks you need to make on this presentation? We're about to go ahead without you.
Sorry, sorry, I was enjoying the evening. Well, first of all, congratulations to everybody and--
Got a statement.
It's, okay, I'm ready now. We wanted to present the following slides of what we do on TIFs, so let's go to the next slide, please. We just wanted to-- we've shared it with everybody, but I'm just going to go through the top line and make it quick, but I will give it to you. If we look at the top line, I'll read it for you. We're looking at just a-- these are the-- this is a list of all the TIFs that we participate in. I'm going to explain the chart to you. If we look at number one, which is a downtown, the taxable base was 72 mil. It has appreciated to 129. The difference is 56 mil, so that means the appreciation is 77 percent. Our participation for 2009 would be 74K. Our total participation to date is 394K. Now, if I go down to the bottom line, so I don't go through all of those, I can tell you that the appraised value of the base year when we started these TIFs was $2 billion. At the 2009 value, they have appreciated to 5.8 bill. We have a taxable value of 3.84-- 3.9 bill. That's the appreciation that all these TIFs have done throughout the history. All right? Our total commitment for 2009 would be 4 mil, and our total commitment to date is 21 mil. All right? So, and what we have achieved so far is 1.2 mil. All right? If we look at the total cumulative, cumulative, sorry, an annual, the cumulative is 21.1 mil, and our commitment for this year is 4.2 mil. All right? That's on all the TIFs. Now, next slide, what we wanted to show you is how these-- we have a list for all of them. Again, I'll just go through one of them. Each TIF is different, and so I'll just take the downtown, number one, which is a section of downtown. The base year was 1998, the end of the term was 2018, and the level of participation is 100 percent. Each one of the different TIFs has a different timeline and it has a different base year. All right? Next slide. So if we look at the tax increment financial term length, we can see that we have 11 TIFs that are up to 20 years. We have 21 to 30, we have eight TIFs that are 21 to 30, and we have one TIF that's over 30. This has been throughout the history of the college, okay? If we look at the financial zones of participation level, we have four that are 50 percent, we have four that are at 80 percent, and 12 of them that are 100 percent. All right? Okay, so the next one, we would like to-- and we will go through the detail of the guidelines so everybody understands how the board has asked us to consider a TIF. So I'm going to go through these, I'm just going to read them so that-- for the benefit of our new members and for the audience, and I apologize, but we really didn't want to summarize them because you have some conditions that you want to do. So the Board of Trustees, this shall consider tax increment and TIF according to the filing guidelines to ensure that all requests participating in TIF districts are reviewed under the same criteria and to ensure that only the most--
Okay. You guys having trouble hearing me?
(laughing).
There's no action on the closed meeting. The next item before us is amendment to the Radio Shack lease agreement. Is there a motion to authorize the chancellor to sign this agreement?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this board adopt the agreement to partici-- well, I'm sorry, in the, uh, to adopt the amendment to the lease. I was looking at the wrong agreement, so, yes.
So authorize me to sign it?
Yeah, authoriz-- what I said, authorize you to sign it. Yes, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Give a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Second.
Give a second, I'll just--
Okay. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay. Next item is consideration and approval for Veridian TIRZ participation agreement. I don't know, are you--
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't-- where's Mark McClendon? We didn't give them a warning, we just came right back in and people didn't have time. Where's Mark? I, I know, I know, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll have to do better next time, too.
Yeah, I'll watch what I'm doing next time, sorry about that.
One of those black horns like they have in South Africa.
(laughing). Can't I tell Mark McClendon we're ready?
Casey Bernard, what?
Okay, alright. I will tell you while Mark is coming that you have information, first of all, we have consideration of the, of participation, your participation, the Veridian TIRS participation, project in the city of Arlington. And we have the officials from Arlington to make that presentation. I will just call them up while Mark is coming, they're, they're here. And I'm so sorry, sir, I don't remember your name, Mark has it.
Chancellor Hadley, I appreciate that. My name is Bruce Payne, I'm the--
Bruce, yes, Bruce, thank you.
Economic Development Manager for the City of Arlington. And I can just go ahead and get started on it--
Sure, go right ahead.
Unless you all want an initial presentation. Okay, sorry.
Mark, do you have some opening remarks you need to make on this presentation? We're about to go ahead without you.
Sorry, sorry, I was enjoying the evening. Well, first of all, congratulations to everybody and--
Got a statement.
It's, uh, okay, I'm ready now. We wanted to present the following slides of what we do on TIFs, so let's go to the next slide, please. We just wanted to, we, we've shared it with everybody, but we, I'm just gonna go through the top line and make it quick, but I will give it to you. If we look at the top line, I'll read it for you. We're looking at just, uh, these are the, this is a list of all the TIFs that we participate in. I'm gonna explain the chart to you. If we look at number one, which is a downtown, the taxable base was 72 mil. It has appreciated to 129, the difference is 56 mil. So that means the appreciation is 77 percent. Our participation for 2009 would be 74K. Our total participation to date is 394K. Now, if I go down to the bottom line, to, to, so I don't go through all of those, I, I can tell you that the appraised value of the base year when we started these TIFs was $2 billion. At the 2009, at the 2009 value, they have appreciated to 5.8 bill. We have a taxable value of 3.84, 8, 3.9 bill. That's the appreciation that all these TIFs have done throughout the history. All right? Our total commitment for 2009 would be 4 mil. And our total commitment to date is 21 mil. All right? So, and what we have achieved so far is 1.2 mil. All right? If we look at the total cumulative, cumulative, sorry, and annual, the cumulative is 21.1 mil and our commitment for this year is 4.2 mil. All right? That's on all the TIFs. Now, next slide, what we wanted to show you is how these, we have a list for all of them. Again, I'll just go through one of them. Each TIF is different, and so I'll just take the downtown, number one, which is a section of downtown. The base year was 1998, the end of the term was 2018, and the level of participation is 100 percent. Each one of the different TIFs has a different timeline and it has a different base year. All right? Next slide. So if we look at the tax increment financial so, term length, we can see that we have 11 TIFs that are up to 20 years, we have 21 to 30, we have eight TIFs that are 21 to 30, and we have one TIF that's over 30. This has been throughout the history of the college, okay? If we look at the financing zones of participation level, we have four that are 50 percent, we have four that are at 80 percent, and 12 of them that are 100 percent. All right? Okay, so the next one, we would like to, and we will go through the detail of the guidelines so everybody understands how the board has asked us to consider a, a TIF. So I'm, I'm gonna go through these, I'm just gonna read them so that, for the, for the benefit of our new members and for the audience. And I apologize, but we, we really didn't wanna summarize them because you have some, some conditions that you wanna do. So the Board of Trustees, this shall consider tax increment and TIF according to the filing guidelines to ensure that all requests participating in TIF districts are reviewed under the same criteria and to ensure that only the most effective and appropriate TIF districts are selected for participation by the college district. Meeting these criteria does not guarantee the participation by the Board of Trustees. This is just a criteria that have to be met, to be analyzed and to be-- So the proposed TIF, first one, will be, will have to be used for primary purpose of encouraging an economic and/or community development revitalization within a blighted area or within any municipality of Tarrant County. The proposed TIF district will generate an increase in TCC properties' tax base within five years after the approval of the TIF district project and the financing plan, and an analysis of such financial impact to TCCD will be provided as part of the proposal. Within 10 years of the proposed TIF, the district will generate tax revenues based upon present value analysis that will at least equal to the tax revenue of TCCD and will forego by participating in the TIF district. The TIF-funded projects will not exceed 15 percent of the taxable value of the private investment for real property improvements within TCCD service area. Okay. The TIF district or developer, or both, will enter into a formal agreement with TCCD. This agreement should, whenever possible, be of direct and significant benefit to the educational purposes of the college district. This might be a function of the geographic proximity to the TIF district to a TCC facility or the willingness of the TCCD district or developer to contribute financially to the college district scholarship fund. Okay? If a TIF district anticipates issue in debt, the TIF district annual revenues will be at least 125 percent of its average annual debt service requirements. All right? A developer associated with the TIF district may be required to execute a written agreement within the participating taxes entities and provide these entities with acceptable financial security to ensure that private development is completed. All right, criteria. A developer associated with the TIF district must certify that its business is equal opportunity employer. Participation in the TIF district, which is now, you will notice, may not exceed 25 years. Before, we did have some that were 30 years. So that is, that is a rule the board has enacted. Although the TIF district itself may extend beyond the 25 years. Okay? Requested to participate in the TIF may not exceed the level of 50 percent. So you, you will also notice that historic, we had some, but now it's only 50 percent. The proposed TIF participation agreement includes language that identifies a point at which the TCCD can cease participation if the TIF does not reach a specific level of performance. Additional information, as requested by the Board of Trustees, is, we will provide a list of taxing entities participated in the TIF district and their level of participation, planned private investment, including a list of developers involved in the TIF district, and a list of projects that the municipal or county staff members anticipate will be funded by the proposed TIF. In order to maintain a consistency, the TIF district proposal will be presented to the TCC Board of Trustees as follows. The college district staff, after collaboration with the municipality county representatives, will present all information related to the TIF district proposal. A standard format for reflecting the college district evaluation criteria will be used for all presentations. And so now, unless there's any questions, I would like to introduce Mr. Robert Kimball, Mr. Bruce Payne, and Mr. Haynes Hill Calgrom.
Let's, let's--
Can we ask you--
Mark, if there are questions first.
I have some questions for you.
All right.
I, I was, there was a checklist, among other things, in our package.
Right.
And are you, are you telling us, are you recommending, are, are you telling us that at this time, if you're asking us to approve this, that all of these criteria have been met? I mean, apparently, this is, this process had, had occurred a couple of years ago, maybe? Maybe we--
Longer than that, the, the guidelines?
Yeah, I mean--
The guidelines are--
Are you recommending, are, are you telling us that these criteria have been fulfilled? Or is someone else gonna testify to that effect so that we can?
Well, this, this is what I am telling you, I'll be happy to do that.
Oh, yeah, sure, okay.
We have made a checklist, and in the checklist, we said, we, these are the criterias for the TIF to make a presentation. If you go to the part B of the checklist, we will come back to the board and make an analysis of it. That is, the, the criteria here was for the presentation, does the TIF complete these things in order to make a presentation to the board? We're not asking you to approve it, we're at--
Okay, okay, I just misunderstood what you--
No, sir, not at all.
What we're being asked to do, okay. So this is just a draft or something that we may do later?
Yes, sir, what, what--
Well, excuse me, no, there, there, the, the agenda does call for consideration and approval of the agreement tonight.
And on your checklist, you have an evaluation of the proposed TIF that's been completed by the TIF staff based on criteria approved by the Board of Trustees. Well, I'm asking you, an evaluation, is this the evaluation? Are you giving us the evaluation so that we can approve this, or should we approve this later on? You follow me?
I do, I do. I, I thought that from, from, um, from Form B, if I looked at Form B, I should give you a written evaluation so that you could, in that evaluation, you could make a decision to, to approve or not approve.
Oh, so you're saying, number four, the TIF proposal meets all applicable requirements set forth in--
Right. That is correct.
And then you have, I'm just trying to figure out where we are, an evaluation of the proposed TIF district has been contemplated by the D, TCCD staff based upon criteria approved, so you have made that evaluation. We can check that box.
We can, we can present that to you, yeah.
So are you recommending that the TC, that we participate in?
I, I wanna present you the evaluation, and I think the board makes--
Okay.
--the decision. I do not make a decision for the board. If you look at checklist B--
No, I'm just saying you recommend, it says you make a recommendation.
I will make a recommendation to the board, and I think the board will then decide. I, I--
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I just wanted to know procedurally where we--
Yeah.
And I also have a question.
All right.
Mr. Green, uh, Mr. Greenhill, if you're referring to the criteria that was listed?
No, I'm looking at a piece of paper that's in my deal.
Okay, the criteria, number two. Can we go back to that, please?
Sure we can.
See. Well, number one, that, that bottom half of that--
Right.
Within a blighted area, within any municipality within Tarrant County. What we have seen, and which is why I, I don't agree with the TIFs, is that is oftentimes not the case. You know, we can--
Go ahead.
Banagl and change the rules, but originally, the TIFs were made to go into a blighted area.
Right.
That is no longer the case. We're going into very wealthy cities, and, and, and my question is, where is, where is private funding for these projects? Again, that has always been the key by why, no, how I assessed a TIF. Seen very few blighted areas.
Well--
Mrs. Van De Griff, sorry, Mrs. Van De Griff, I saw, you were about to say something, that's why I was looking at you, Mrs. Winnet. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman and the board, that we allow Veridian to make their presentation first, and before we begin to discuss whether or not it's in a blighted area or whatever. So, Mark--
I think so.
If, if you would call them forward now to make the presentation.
I, I think that's a, that's a great concept, and any question you have, we'll be happy to--
Thank you.
Veridian would like to make a presentation.
Mr. President, members of the board, Chancellor Hadley, thank you all very much for your time. First, I'd just like to mention to Mr. Greenhill and Mr. Carter, congratulations on your election and best wishes on your future responsibilities. Anyway, let me get to the point with this. The Veridian project is a very big project for the city of Arlington. It's one that the city's been involved with for approximately four years. And it has, in, it has had to deal with a number of issues. And I'll start very quickly with some term clarification for the benefit of those in the room, make sure that we're not confusing anybody. Two terms being interchangeably used here, TIFs and TIRS. TIF is tax increment financing, it's a reference to the method of financing, and a TIRS is the geographic manifestation of that, that's represented on the ground. The Veridian request is regarding the TIRS number six for the city of Arlington, which, for a project that is planned to be, have, or have a very large impact in the city. In fact, its financial impact will exceed that of the Cowboys stadium once it's completely built out, which is a significant addition to the city's and, and to the county's and the college district's tax base. This graphic demonstrates more or less, I think I just turned it off, how the, how it works. Which one of these is the, there we go, I got a pointer here. All right, this blue area here, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to aim that laser at you, this is the existing tax base of the property, essentially flat in the absence of development.
Put it that way.
I'm sorry.[1231.95][1232.05](laughing).
You need to start over.
All right. This, this area right here is the existing, represents the existing tax base of the 2,300 acres that would be involved in the Veridian TIF. It has been flat since anybody can remember, mainly because it's an extremely difficult property to develop. This developer is the fourth major attempt at this property, and mainly because it's, of its adjacency and the amount of floodplain that's in it. And in this particular case, the need to make corrections for the efforts of previous developers who, who probably made bad decisions regarding engineering and altered the land accordingly, and these items will have to be fixed, which would be a very capital-intensive enterprise. These are some images of the property out there. As you can see, it's essentially a wilderness. There is no infrastructure whatsoever out there. It's a very capital-intensive project, as I mentioned. There's no water, no sewer. It's quite a bit of floodplain that will have to be reclaimed, all of which has been designed and worked on for the last several years with the city working closely with the Veridian developer. And then at the bottom, and I know this is difficult for you to see, but I did put a copy of this presentation in front of you so you can study it. You will see what essentially is on this top line, the history of property value for this property, where you see it. It, it tracks along from, I think, 1994 in the $10 million range, and then the last developer that came through that was proposing development, there was anticipation by the appraisal district of what was going to occur there. The value peaked at about $52 million in '99, then the, then that developer's financing ran out, he wasn't able to complete the project, and the value of the property immediately declined back down to about 14 million again. And so the point there is that unless development does occur out there, this property won't be worth much more than what it is today. And it is, again, as I mentioned, a very difficult, very capital-intensive project to bring forward. With that being said, I'm going to let the representative of the developer, Huffines Communities, this is Bob Kimball, to speak about the nature of the Veridian project to you, describe the details of the project, its complexities that have, that he has had to deal with, as well as the attributes, the proposed attributes of the project. Also with us, I have David Hawes, who is the city's financial consultant on this, in this matter, who will be able to speak in great detail to any of the financially-based questions that you may have, which, by the way, I did put a completed, hard copy version of this, of the project finance plan on your desks in front of you as well. So with that being said, Bob Kimball.
Thanks, Bruce. Chancellor, President, board members, I appreciate the opportunity to present Veridian to you. I thought I'd back up and, and talk a little bit more about the, the economics of where we're at, where this site is at today. The, the site is, it's in a good location in terms of its geographic center of the whole metroplex. It, it will be, when we come out of the ground in September of this year, one of the largest infill master planning communities being developed in the United States. It will be the only gold Audubon International certified project in the state of Texas that's never had one. What that does is it speaks to the sustainability, sustainability aspects of the project. We're limited to 15 minutes, so I don't have a lot of time to get into that detail, but the property was acquired in '06. A previous speculator had purchased it through a bankruptcy proceeding from the previous developer. They, actually, the last successful thing that happened on the property was historically significant. It was the treaty with the Indians in the birthplace of North Texas. It was the Burge Fort Treaty was signed on this property in the 1840s when Texas was a republic. There's also an active, we partnered with University of Texas at Arlington, and there's an active dinosaur dig on the property as well. Some of you may have read about that. Must have been a fire because all the animals congregated in one area and perished, and the bones weren't scattered. And so it's a, it's a significant dig, so we've worked as well with them. Four years ago, we started working with the neighborhood groups. There are a list of stakeholders that is amazingly significant. There have been numerous meetings like this, the, the, the school district, Action North Arlington, we've, we've been in front of many Rotary Clubs. All of our votes to date on this project have been unanimous, which I think is, is significant. It speaks to the collaborative effort that includes COG. COG had to weigh in on a major thoroughfare plan amendment. The day we purchased the property, the core of engineer permits were expiring, and we were able to get those renewed at the day of closing and subsequently modified to correct all the hydraulic issues that were on the site. To date, about $65 million has been invested in, in the property through acquisition, engineering costs to get the property to this point. I think this is a very telling chart, the, the tax value of the property is at $18 million. We are projecting to start development-- In, this fall, in September, and the appraisal district tells us that that event will increase the assessed valuation to, to just over $60 million. So, and then after the infrastructure improvements go in, the first 350 homes and 120 acres of commercial property are, are fully infrastructureed and all those permitting issues have been resolved, the, the property very quickly goes to $150 to $160 million in, in assessed valuation. The, the financing, the public financing piece, which is a, a small tranche of the overall capital stack, the peak capital number, which is why this project has suffered, will exceed just over $100 million to get this property through and out of the ground in the first phase. It's one of the reasons the Cowboys group passed on it. That build-out, which will take about 12 to 15 years, depending on absorption, the, the residential gets to about a billion three in value, and then the commercial value gets us up to approximately a billion seven in total value. I, I probably don't need to, to run those numbers for you to help you understand the financial impact of going from $18 million to a billion seven. For instance, had the, had, had the property, had the opportunity to develop during this last, what all this could say was pretty much a boom cycle, housing cycle in Texas started improving in the late 80s and continued really all the way through 2008, this property would have already been developed. But the peak capital numbers that are involved in the infrastructure costs have, have made it just economically inviolable. So, which is why we're here. It's why the Texas Legislature passed on a consent agenda municipal management district designation for this site as well. And the municipal management district will be providing the, the debt financing, the flows from the TIRS are pledged to secure that. So it's a, it's been a, it's been a collaborative effort. We've had the privilege of facilitating the group and all the various stakeholders that have been involved in bringing this to fruition. And the bond documents were approved last night at the, for the first bond offering at the city, and we expect to go to the market, assuming we can wrap up the participation agreements with the college district and the hospital district. We'd like to be in the bond market in August.
Did you, did, did I read in somewhere in our agenda that the Tarrant County has agreed to participate?
The county has participated at a, at a higher level, at 75 percent.
75 percent, we can only go to 50, but--
Right.
Okay, when did that happen? Just recently, didn't it?
Right, last month.
Last month, okay.
Or April, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. And when are you gonna go before the hospital district?
July 15th. The, the hospital district asked the county to recommend to them that they should participate, and that is, that's also, it's been done, which I think's important.
While you're taking questions, has the city also agreed to participate?
Yes, city's participating 85 percent, and there's some slides that, that come after me that will explain the disproportionate benefit, really, to the hospital district and the college district because the participation levels are lower. Right now, you get probably about $20,000 in, in tax revenue off this property. And without your help and participation, without the TIRS and the full community support, certainly the bond investors today won't be-- certainly the bond investors today won't be interested, and it's what we've been told. The plan that you have in front of you is the one that is in the bond documents that have been drafted. We had hoped to have all the participation agreements done before we finished that effort. So those documents are pending, waiting approval. It's just taken some time to get on all the various agendas for the final approval. The exciting part about Veridian is really, it's hard to imagine, you can't see across this property. We also purchased the Riverside Golf Course to allow us to put a road through from 360 into the property and have garnered the approvals of Grand Prairie. The Grand Prairie Council also unanimously voted to support Veridian, which I think also is very important. There will be 3,000-plus housing units here, plus a town center development of about 120 acres. We expect, because of the location and the fact that this is a new urbanist development, a live, work, play, literally, environment where you can walk to your house, that every major office relocation, because of our proximity to the airport, will get an opportunity to pitch them to build their office buildings here in the Veridian Town Center area. So the leasing agents for UCR, for instance, that do a lot of the leasing, are very excited about the town center, and as soon as we roll tractors in September, we'll start the pre-leasing activities. We already have some existing commitments. For instance, the engineering company in Arlington has committed to move their office space here as well. The big difference between where we are now and where this project has always been in the past is that once you bring all the infrastructure and you've solved all the environmental issues and all the core permitting issues, and you actually finally go vertical, you won't see the kind of fluctuations in assessed valuation that you've seen historically on the property. So that's a good thing. And we're right here, finally, at the cusp of getting that done. The markets, fortunately for Texas, we're creating jobs. Fortunately, the bond markets have come back from municipal financing. We've already procured all the necessary capital to move forward. So we're down to this last piece to make the project economically viable.
Is there low-income housing anywhere in this development?
It depends on your definition of low-income housing.
Well, give me a range on what the houses, the cost of the houses.
There's rental housing, senior housing, attached townhouse housing, all the way up through multimillion-dollar custom housing. So really, all spectrums. There's even the potential for what we call carriage housing. The city created a whole new zoning designation to allow new urbanism. And so you can also have garage apartments for elderly. Historically, in the old neighborhoods, the garage apartments have served as housing for students who would also provide, you know, helping out with kids and babysitting and all the kinds of things. So there's a whole list of new urbanist principles that are applied to Veridian. Again, in the interest of time, we didn't go through all that.
Real quickly, I recognize that the project is in North Arlington, but the school district is Uless, and you have K through 12. If not, what high school would you go to?
In HEB School District, you have choice. In fact, if you attend the International Blackaloriet, which is one of the finest in the state of Texas program, you can even be outside the district and attend HEB schools. So the children here will have a choice. The school district will be purchasing a site in the first phase to build their elementary school. They have several options for the middle school. Their constituents have said they don't want a new high school. We wanted to have a high school here, but their customer base has said they like the big high schools. It allows their children opportunities to do things that they can't do in a smaller environment. Just to give you a sense of the scale, over 1,200 acres of the 2,200 acres will be in open space and wetlands. There's a significant wetlands restoration. We've worked with environmental consultants, the Corps of Engineers, Ducks Unlimited to create new duck habitat. There's $40 million-plus in drainage, flood control, wetlands restoration dollars that will be spent over the life of this project. It will be on the scale of White Rock Lake, if you've ever seen that in Dallas. The River Legacy Trail System, which is a real jewel for this area, has three and a half miles of trail along the river. We do have some edge conditions, of course, to deal with. We have industrial area that has fuel storage tanks. There's a landfill across the street. We were able to negotiate an agreement with the landfill operator, and they're amending their permits so that we can coexist together. And so we're at the point now where we have a window of opportunity to finally bring all the infrastructure and build this thing and get the first phase. So you will see a significant increase, even at a 50% level, in the cash flow of the district almost immediately. If we go to $60 million overnight, that the appraisal district has told us will be the new value, even at 50% participation, you'll see a significant improvement in your cash flow. Without your participation, the bond offering documents will be thrown in the trash, and we'll have to start over.
I don't know if you've seen the area before there, Robin, but I don't know what your definition of blighted is, but this particular area has been sort of wrecked with extensive gravel mining. I've seen most of it underwater at different times, and I think that, I would like to see this harmonious life with the landfill because the landfill looks like it's about 150 feet tall. So I think if you want to make a definition of blighted, this one's about as close as you can probably get.
Well, I think, and you're right. But it just depends on what's priority in the city of Arlington. I mean, they've gone in there and really redid the Cowboys, and there are areas that need to be developed. It's just what happens to be in priority in the city of Dallas.
I guess so. This is probably, well, it is the largest single undeveloped area that Arlington has left.
Couple short questions. It says that one of us, somebody in the district, in our district, will be appointed to the board. Would that be usually our chancellor or CEO? I mean, who do you typically?
Ms. Greenhill, it's usually whomever this board wants to appoint.
Okay, that's fine.
We bring a recommendation from the staff. Sometimes that's a board member. Sometimes it's a staff member.
Okay.
But you'll get to decide that.
All right. I have to do, second 4.6, has anyone ever asked you for, execute some sort of security that you're gonna? It says, "Any developer associated with the zone, which is you, may be required to execute a written agreement with participating entities that provides acceptable financial security to ensure private developments completed as planned." Has anyone ever asked you for that?
No, because the $65 million-plus required by the developer have already been contributed. So the good news about this is that the...
Just a due diligence question.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay. It says, "We have an out in this thing, accepted bonds have been," I think there's a typo in this section. I'm going real quickly here, section 4.7 in the last paragraph, I think there's a typo with a three little i in there, three in the hole. But you're fixing to issue bonds, so if we issue bonds and we pledge, we deposit our money, then we can't get out, right? You follow me? In other words...
That's right.
If you issue bonds or obligations continuing the pledge of the portion credit, this section shall not be in effect as to that portion, and it says, "Have been paid or otherwise satisfied in full," or three little i, that doesn't make any sense to me. So somebody needs to fix that, whatever, it's just a...
The MMD in this instance is issuing the debt based on a pledge of the various TIRS revenues, and that financing, without a full valid pledge, wouldn't work. So, you know, the bond investor...
Absolutely, I understand.
Right, if you're a bond investor and you're purchasing...
Oh, absolutely.
Having flows conditionally pledged.
I'm just saying, if we agree to sign this thing, that sentence needs to be changed a little bit because it doesn't make any sense. For interest of full disclosure, I represent your trustee, Wells Fargo, in connection with this transaction. I've talked to the council about this, and your, our legal counsel, I don't believe there's a conflict, even though you say the deal will die if we don't approve it. But I don't believe there's a conflict of interest, my independent judgment on this deal, but I just wanted everybody to know that. The trustee, they're issuing some bonds for the roads, I believe it is, taxable, unliving tax utility road, something or other. There are two kinds of bonds for about $21 million. My client, our client is the trustee, so, but I don't see that that's a conflict. It does not affect my independent judgment.
Are there other questions? Okay. Does the board feel comfortable voting on this tonight, or should we put it off until the end of July? We're good for tonight?
I'm good.
Okay, do I hear a motion to participate in the TIF?
Second.
Louise moved, and, okay. Any discussion?
I think it's a good deal.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time and participation, appreciate it.
Motion carried.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a consent agenda. I'm a relatively new board member too, so it took me a while to figure out what this was, but there are several items on the agenda, and any board member has the right to request that one of these items be removed from the consent agenda and to be considered as a separate item if you wish to do so. So are there any members that wish to remove any item from the consent agenda and consider separately?
Mr. President, I would like to remove all the Gideon Toll requests from the agenda.
Which are?
Okay, that would be B.
Gideon Toll?
That's item 13B. 13B is just one for Gideon Toll.
Okay. For $64,765.
$64,765. You have different attachments, Mrs. Winnett, but it's just one agenda item, okay?
Yes.
Okay, are there others? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item 13B?
Still moved.
Is there, and we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We will go back to the Gideon Toll to 13B. Do we have someone that, do you have questions on that, Mrs. Winnett?
Well, I did, but I, my glasses, I can't see what I'm reading. I guess, thank you very much, 13B.
Would you like an explanation of the item?
I was gonna say, why are you looking? Ms. Petty, would you come to the podium, please, and tell her basically what this item is?
Yes, please. Gideon Toll, yes, I absolutely will. This is for additional scope. It does not exceed our approved budget. It is being paid for out of our owner contingency, and it's for work that's very, very necessary for our project to proceed and not have any scheduling delays. It's specifically around coordinating our AVIT and security documents.
What are AVITs?
Audiovisual. And IT and our security. It's also in regard to some work that the city requires us to do on the civil modifications and electrical modifications that we are required to do by the city, and we have to do those. And also some electrical changes for our IT systems that we've requested. So these are all things that we've requested. It is in the overall approved budget. We do have very adequate owners contingency, as you know, from the last meeting where we pulled that into our control, and so we're monitoring those things very, very carefully at this point. And this is a very important agenda item for our work to continue on schedule.
And this is at the downtown?
It's at the downtown Trinity River East Campus that's under construction at this time.
Well, what I would suggest, and I'm going to propose this, that we table this and look at it and see, and again, look at what we're going to do as we move forward with continued construction of this campus.
Mr. President?
What do you mean, if?
Are you wanting to table it until later in the meeting, or do you want to postpone it until a later date?
I want to postpone it to a later date.
This will cause scheduling delays in the construction, and it will have a rippling effect that you need to be aware of in making that decision.
Well, we've had many rippling effects, so I don't suggest we wait too long to do this, but I would like to bring it back at a different time. I'd like more information.
Mrs. Winnett, if I may ask specifically what your concerns are?
Yes, you may. My concerns, and these have been my ongoing concerns, is the continuing rise of the escalating cost at the downtown east campus.
Are you making, if you're making that a motion, then I need a second while the motion is on the floor. And then we have discussion. Is there a second? Okay, there's no second, so, okay. All right, are there other questions about the item? We have a motion?
I move to approve this, what is it? I don't have my glasses in the drawer. A contract amendment.
Amendment number six.
Number six.
Mrs. Winnett, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have after. Please feel free to call me at your convenience.
I would like to, well, let me take a vote and then I have a question. Those in favor, if you know what I'm saying, aye. Opposed, same time? Okay, we have one opposed. Okay, I think it would be in order for, since we have two new board members, and I remember two years ago when I was struggling, and I remember tonight when I'm still struggling, that it would be good if we could put together some kind of presentation, and maybe you're doing this tomorrow or something, to kind of get them and us together. Maybe we could do it at some board meeting or something to kind of get us a status of where we are and what's going on. Is that doable?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, tomorrow morning at 8:00, Mr. Greenhill and Mr. Carter will be right here in this room, and every member of the Celt will be here to tell them all they ever wanted to know about what's going on at Tarrant County College District, and that will include an update from Ms. Petty. And one of you can come, only one other board member can come, otherwise you have a quorum, and we don't have it posted as a meeting, but that will be here in this room in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to share my concern about the project too, but I don't feel like it's appropriate to put up an impediment, particularly since we don't really have another meeting, you know, until, I think until August. That's a long time to put things off.
I think we have one 31st of July.
You're gonna have one the 31st of July, but, and I do understand those concerns, but let me tell you that, as Ms. Petty said, when she brings things to you, there's a state law that requires us to bring you any change in the contract, any change order that's $25,000 or above. When she brings those to you, it doesn't mean you're spending more money than this board has already authorized. It just simply means that you need to know that there is a change. That's all it means. So there is no new money on the table at all. We're committed to bringing this project in within the budget that the board established. That's a firm commitment, and we will not go above that. So basically, anything else we talk about as we talk about this is a rehash of what we've already talked about, what we've already decided to do. Of course, we can discuss it however much you want, but I do want you to know that we're never talking about adding to what this board has already agreed to spend. Now, so the only thing that's left to do for you as a board, and you can always act and rescind your action to spend whatever number of dollars you want to spend, but you've already put in motion the completion of this campus. And the things that Nina outlined in this one, Mrs. Winnett, are really things that we say we got to get done. And occasionally, when you have a project, any project, but one of this magnitude, it almost always happens, the city in whose jurisdiction you operate will say to you, "We have a new code, and since you're building, you've got to build by this code." So there are times we absolutely have no choice except to...
I understand that.
Have a change order, so...
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the monthly financial report.
Yes, sir. Mr. McClinda?
Good evening, once again. Okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, what we have done is, we typically give you a financial summary of Fund Ten, Fund Forty, and Fund Seventy. Everybody here is, is familiar with governmental accounting versus managerial accounting. So I will give you the first one. Our maintenance fund, which is our basic operation, what runs a college fund. We have a revenue of one hundred and ninety-seven. We have an actual collections up to now of one sixty-eight. We have expenditures of one forty, encumbrances of nine, so we have a budget balance of forty-eight. All right? If we look at renewal replacement, which is Fund Forty, which is all the construction projects that we do so far, we have a budget of eighty-two, an actual collection so far of forty-four, expenses of twenty-nine, encumbrances of twenty, a budget balance of thirty-three. Our building fund, which is our building, a downtown building, we have a budget of fifty-nine for this year. We have an actual of thirty-five, expenses of twenty-two, encumbrances of twenty-five, giving us a fund balance of twelve. All right? Questions? Okay, all right, okay, let's go to the next one. We have provided for all the board members and as the public, we provided a financial statement. We, we won't go through that. We have some questions. If we have some questions, please send it to me. Mrs. Fendergriff has sent me some questions, and we're happy to answer those. It's just that, as anybody else, we will be happy to entertain those questions, all right? All right, we would like to now go to the portfolio report. No? You don't have the portfolio report? Okay, I will read out the portfolio. I apologize, the portfolio report is in your package, so I'll go ahead and read it out. Our book value at four-thirty was two-hundred and forty-three million. We had purchases of nineteen, amortization of nine, giving us a value, a book value on five-thirty-one of two-hundred and thirty-five mil, all right? We have a value, a market value at four-thirty was two-hundred and forty-three mil, with our changes in value. Our market value at five-thirty-one is two-thirty-five. If we compare this market value to the thirteen-week average T-bill, we are actually fifty-two basis points. I want everybody to realize that the market is
The light just came on, yeah.
The market is not as, as we have expected it to be, but I think we're all in this market. And if we look at the twenty-six T-bill, we are actually forty-five basis points above. Any questions? On our investments? Well, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have a report from Dr. Morrison and Mr. Greenhill regarding the CCATT. Is that correct? Dr. Morrison?
Yes, on Saturday, excuse me, on Saturday, June fifth, I participated along with our then-board president, Mrs. Appleman, and Mr. Greenhill, and Chancellor Hadley, and Vice Chancellor Gates in a statewide meeting, which was held and hosted by the Dallas County Community College District of Community College Trustees from across the state. It was an informative meeting. Most critical was the pending impact of legislative decisions, which was outlined for us, some of the challenges and opportunities that we'll have in the coming weeks and months ahead. Also, I felt that TCCD was very well positioned to meet those challenges and opportunities after hearing the presentation. We were also privileged to have a visit from a gubernatorial candidate, Bill White, who spoke briefly to us and extended his commitment to the community college districts for his candidacy. It was very informative, very good details, and of course, it was very good camaraderie to visit with other trustees from across the state.
Did you know that we were on TV? Channel eight? I get people that were telling me, well, there was a picture in the paper. I said, what are you talking about? Well, it was Channel eight that had us on the news. All three of us, or four.
Do you have additional information?
No.
Casey, did we happen to catch that on TV?
It was a snippet, apparently.
Okay.
Excuse me, I might add that we had some materials from the presentation that were presented to us. We also had Representative Dan Branch with us, who is chairman of the Higher Education Committee, Barry, and a member of the Legislative Budget Board. I didn't, and he's also chair of the Dallas GOP Legislative Delega, delegation. He's met with us before, and we are a member. Our college district is a member of this group of association trustees. I think it, it's a very good group for us to participate with. Helps us to be aware and on the cutting edge of the, as I said, the challenges and opportunities that are coming up before us.
Dan Branch is, Dan Branch's message basically was, there's a lot on the legislature's plate, especially the deficit, and that we're all gonna have, your Board of Trustees, we're all gonna have to work really, really hard to, to get what we want.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I recognize that, I think the acronym would be CCAT, is a new organization. What do they have planned in terms of how many meetings and that legislative priority?
I don't get details on that.
Okay.
Perhaps that'll be forthcoming.
Well, one of the things they did tell us, that they'll let you know, they will be letting you know, as time goes on, when they need you to gather around the troops to help get the word out to the legislature.
I understand they have a website also, and they have recently revised it, so I understand that it's a little better than it, than it was.
This is the group we joined two months ago or so, and you're our representative. But we went for you.
Thank you very much.
And, but this is the trustees of community colleges across the state. We also have the Texas Association of Community Colleges. The executive director is Ray Garcia, and, and they have lobbying efforts, but it was decided that possibly the elected volunteer officials would have a little more impact on the legislators if we went to them or had them to our places and spaces to try to impact their decision-making, particularly relative to our appropriations. And I don't know if the audience has this, but in front of each of us is a draft of the priorities on appropriations, employee health insurance, and I guess that's it. And these were two of the top issues that Ray Garcia suggested that we concern ourselves with. And Chancellor Hadley's right, they, they will organize days on the hill, but I think we have found in our community more effectively, our, more effective, our one-on-one visits when the representatives are at home, and we've all done some of that house calls, so.
Well, and just to give you a little bit of historical background without belaboring the point, because of the unique funding basis for community colleges in Texas, historically, the CEOs of the community colleges have met one Sunday a month to kind of shepherd the effort along through the, the legislature. And then over the years, this board has gone as a group to Austin to walk the hill, or later met with different elected officials here in the county or in Austin. And this, as Mrs. Appleman says, is an effort to realize the potential impact of elected board trustees. There has been, over the years, something of an effort to minimize the potential political effectiveness of elected board members. We have always preferred not to be thought of as political. However, in this day and time, when it is very critical that if we are to retain the small amount of the dollars from the state that we still get, we have to be political and involved in the process. So stepping up to the plate, we had leadership from other trustees across the state who banded together to form this organization, so that we're very upfront with the other elected people in the state to let them know that we are here, elected by our people to represent the educational interests of our communities, and we expect their cooperation to do that. So I think it's a very timely effort, and I would hope that all of the other trustees would take an opportunity to go to some of those events and to get in on the, not only the dialogue, but also of making an impact where it's needed with the members of the state legislature.
Thank you very much. It's, next item is Chancellor's report. Ms. Hadley?
Thank you, Mr. President, and board members. I, I start my report with something that isn't, that didn't come to you, because it came to me this afternoon about four o'clock. It's addressed to Mrs. Appleman with a copy to each one of you and to me. I don't know if you have, if you weren't on your email, you probably didn't see it. And, and I'm not sure, Mrs. Winnett said she couldn't open hers. It's a big document, it's fifty pages long. And I made copies for you if you would like to have it, but we got the official word today, and, and the KELP members are gonna hear this for the first time. We got the official word from the coordinating board, that they have sent their recommendations to the Legislative Budget Board to do exactly what they said they were gonna do, and that is to change the way community colleges are funded. You know, we have been talking about this for the last eight or ten months, knowing that it was likely to come, and today we were officially notified that that's the proposal JCC members that have gone to the Legislative Budget Board. And I just want to read a few things that came from the commissioner. He says, "Since the last legislative session, the coordinating board has listened intently to community and technical college representatives and their concerns about the coordinating board's formula funding recommendations. For this reason, we have made significant changes to the proposal for community and technical colleges to include, one, identifying a strategy that funds educational milestones that are commensurate with the unique missions and student bodies of Texas community and technical colleges; two, delaying implementation until the second year of next biennium to allow institutions to adapt to the new funding methodology." He goes on to tell us that because of the critical role that community colleges play and the increasing enrollment that he is recommending to the Legislative Budget Board a nineteen percent increase over the 2011-based funding. And when I got the email, I called the coordinating board to say, "Do you mean that you're gonna be recommending full-formular funding, and you're gonna give us nineteen percent of that?" And they said, "No, no, 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 no. We just simply mean that we're gonna give you nineteen percent increase over what you're getting right today." And which, by the way, for our new board members, we are not funded fully, community colleges are not. They, they have this formula funding, but they don't give us the full amount. But they're gonna increase nineteen percent, and by that they mean they're gonna set aside nineteen percent of whatever the total dollar amount that they'll give to community colleges, and then they will apportion it out depending upon the number of the percentage of increase that you have. And of course, we got a little bit of money, Nancy May can tell us how much we got last time, for a quarter of a million dollars for growth. And of course, that doesn't come close to covering the growth that, that we, what we have. But they intend to give us that to help us with growth. Now, the other thing that I want to tell you about that is, is that what the momentum points would mean is that the coordinating board would take away ten percent of the funding that we're getting now, and then make us earn it back. Now, presently on the table, we have been ordered to return, if you will, five percent of what we've spent this year, and then deduct five percent from what we think we're gonna get next year. You know, we're funded on a two-year cycle. Additionally, we have been told to look forward to 2011, twelve, and expect to decrease that funding by ten percent.
Ten percent.
Another ten percent. What is happening in the legislature and in the governor's office is a continual pushdown to the local communities for the funding of community colleges. And so as a Board of Trustees, you have to be prepared for that. We're gonna have to pay more and more of the cost of educating students. And of course, you have two ways to pay, with taxes and with tuition. And of course, it's been our intent to keep the taxes as low as possible and keep the tuition as low as possible. But the, the coordinating board is, is gonna push us, and they tell us, they're saying that they have this model that you'll see about the responsibility for educating our students. The student is at the center, there's a place for the community, there's a place for P through twelve education, there's a place for higher education institutions, and of course, there's a role for the state. They say to us finally, most relevant in this circle to the discussion of formula funding is the role and responsibility of the institutions. Institutions of higher education must be guided by a fundamental philosophy, that if a student is admitted, I wanna underscore that, if a student is admitted, the institution must have a singular focus on helping that student earn a credential. While there are many other factors involved in student success, institutions can have a direct and meaningful impact. The change in formula funding methodologies will closely align the higher education culture with student success and achieve greater cost efficiencies for the state and the student. And so I, I'm, the first thing that went to my mind when I was listening to our two citizens talk about what we must do with full-time faculty and adjunct faculty, the first thing that goes through my mind is that the, the public truly doesn't understand what we're dealing with, with community colleges, and that there are a lot of moving parts to this, and it is going to take a lot of discussion on our part. And I would never argue with one of our citizens who comes to speak with us, but I will tell everybody that there is research that shows that you cannot tell the difference between the success of a student who's taught by an adjunct faculty member and one who's taught by a full-time faculty member. Those are the facts. What Tarrant County College chooses to do becomes philosophical, on whether or not we want to have a greater percentage of full-time faculty than other similarly situated community colleges, and that certainly is this board's prerogative. If you want to do that, it'll cost you, it'll cost you a lot more money. And I can tell you that when we look at similarly situated institutions, community colleges in Texas, and we look at the results that we get, and we look at the results that they get, and in many instances, our percentage of full-time faculty is greater, and they get greater results than we get. And so it isn't just about whether it's a full-time or adjunct faculty member, it really is about the, the methodologies that are used and how we go about doing things. And there are a lot of things that we need to tweak at Tarrant County College. We're already beginning to look at a lot of those things. Somebody mentioned, Brian Stewart mentioned, the Achieving the Dream program that we are participating in as of this year. Next week, a team of us go to Austin for our orientation. The Achieving the Dream is a great program. We've been looking at it for some time. Dr. LeBlanc brought it to my attention last year, saying, "I think we ought to," or what she said, "I think Northwest Campus ought to do this." And I looked at it, and I thought, "Well, I think all of Tarrant County College ought to do this, not just Northwest Campus." And we talked about it as a group, and they came back to me and said, "No, we're not ready." And I said, "Okay, if that's what you say, we're not ready." And then a few weeks ago, we got an invitation saying that there was additional money to help us participate if we would. I looked at that, I saw that we're the only large community college in Texas that's not participating. I went back to the staff, and I said, "Tell me how we can get ready." And so now we're ready. We're having to tweak some things in order to be ready. For instance, we're having to have a whole different twist on how we do research at Tarrant County College. So a lot of things, a lot of changes that have to be made. There are a lot of moving parts. We're also participating in some other activities. We got that one-point-five-million-dollar grant that I told you about. So there are a lot of things that we must do, but I will tell you, at the end of the day, if there is one thing that keeps me up at night, it is whether or not I and the rest of the team are gonna be able to get the faculty tuned in to what we must do, because we must do it. And one of the things that I gave you in my report is a recommendation, a set of recommendations from the Northeast Campus faculty, that I was very pleased to get from that faculty. I challenged the JCC. I said, "These are the things that I" I said, "These are the things that I think I see are coming. I want you to tell us how to get there." Because actually, the faculty has to lead these changes. You know, I can't lead them, and the other administrators really can't lead them. It's the faculty who is the keeper of quality. The faculty set the standards, and the faculty are the people who are gonna be responsible for keeping that. And we can't dictate to the faculty everything they do, but at the end of the day, we're gonna be responsible for making sure that this institution does what it's supposed to do by students, and the state is telling us, "We're gonna make you do it." You know, what they're saying to us in essence is, "We've been giving you money for trying and trying and trying. We're gonna stop. We're gonna pay you for performance." That's the sea change, not just for us, but for community colleges around the state. And by the way, Texas is not the only state that's beginning to do this. There are other states that's also doing it. You will see in the information when you read it that they are saying the same thing is coming to the universities. They are going to demand results. Now, they're giving them a little bit more time to get geared up, but they're gonna be looking at paying for success. Now, one of the things they threw out at the beginning was that they were gonna pay us for As, Bs, and Cs. I don't know if that's gonna still stand or not. It isn't mentioned here, at least I didn't read it, I couldn't read the whole report. But, um, as you know, if, if that were the case for us at Tarrant County College, if we were being paid for As, Bs, or Cs for last year, we would have lost seventeen million dollars of appropriations. So that's how serious it is, and it's gonna mean that a lot of things are gonna have to be changed at Tarrant County College. Some people aren't gonna be happy, and so I'm telling all of you now, you may be getting telephone calls from a lot of folk who say, "She doesn't know what she's doing, or she's pushing too hard, or she's doing this. I have to push." All of us have to work together to make this happen, or else we're gonna be caught holding the bag. I maintain that we can do this. It's gonna be a big challenge for us, but I'm convinced that working together, we can all do it, and we're gonna need your help. We're gonna need your help to continue to talk to our legislative delegations to make sure they understand. There is some talk by some members of the legislature that we should just give up on some of these folk. I mean, after all this, that we keep spending money, money, money. Well, as I will say to all of you, and I said to the forward chamber the other day, if we give up on them, who's gonna help them? The community college is the only place where a lot of people have to go, and if they are denied access to the community college, who is gonna be your workforce? The people that we're trying to help and remediate are gonna be those primary people. Uh, I know I sound like I'm preaching. I keep preaching to myself because it is a mammoth job that we have, and we're gonna have to all be focused. If you look at that strategic plan, I want you to know it's gonna guide everything we do here at Tarrant County College. And if you look at it, and you look closely at it, everything in it is all about student access and success. That's what we're all about here, and that's what we're gonna have to be focused on. It is, however, going to mean some significant changes. We've already made quite a few changes, and it's gonna call for more changes. Now with that, I'm not gonna talk anymore about my report except to say one thing that I'm gonna call on the Kelp members. I gave you a report in your folders for you to look at from some of the things that are going on with the strategic plan that we are already in, in place with. And I just want each one of them to give you a quick snippet of, of what you got so that you can hear from them. But the first thing I want to look, for you to look at is I sent you a one-pager on enrollment for the summer, nineteen percent increase over last year. Twenty-six thousand and four students, a nineteen percent increase over last year. And so when I tell you that the funding that we get from the coordinating board isn't up to where it should be, they say they're gonna fund us for growth, but even on the growth, they're giving us a little bit of what we ought to get. So we keep, all these people keep coming to us, and we're committed to serving them, and it is indeed going to be a challenge. So I will call now on the Kelp members. Bill, you're right there first. You wanna go first? You're right there. Okay, just go right ahead.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. President Hudson, board members, I had two items on the note that was sent to you by the chancellor. First of all, we have just completed a comprehensive compensation and classification study to see where we are in our pay schedule. This was faculty and administrators, this, uh, excuse me, administrators and support staff. It did not cover faculty. I'm glad to say we weren't too far off. We, overall, we're about three point nine percent behind the market. This study will help drive the recommendations that will be, be bringing forth to the chancellor and to you for the salary schedule that you will get as part of the budget in August. The second point is that, and I'm not sure if Ms. Gonzalez is still here, but our associate vice chancellor for institutional diversity, Nidia Gonzalez, has been part of the foundation of the New Texas Association of Diversity Officers in Higher Education, and since this memo was written, we have engaged with a, an outside vendor to come in and provide our baseline assessment for diversity, to give us where we are in terms of participation, in terms of management practices, and in terms of the cultural, uh, cultural atmosphere of Tarrant County College as it approaches diversity.
Thank you, Bill. I will also tell board members, we do the salary survey for faculty separately, so that will not be overlooked. Nina?
Thank you. As everybody knows by now, I'm the steward of bricks and mortar. But in an effort to ensure student access and success, my goal since I arrived at TCCD in late January has been to drive efficiencies around our facilities and look really hard at how we can operate more cost-effectively. To that end, I wanted to share three cost-saving successes that we've had, and I think, Mrs. Winnet, this hopefully will make you happy that I'm focused on trying to get our costs down. All three of these are around, uh, two of them are around the Trinity River campus, but one's a little bit more district-wide. Uh, the first one, at the time we purchased Radio Shack, as everyone knows, we downsized the construction of the Trinity River East Campus and consolidated on the south side of the river. Since that time, Austin Commercial's scope has been shrinking. A huge part of my focus the last four months that I've been here has been really restructuring the Austin Commercial's construction contract, and that endeavor has resulted in a reduction in scope and savings of about ten million dollars. Secondly, we've been evaluating our need for project management services, and I've hired Kirby Chadwell, who I'd like to introduce tonight. Kirby, could you stand up? Kirby's a twenty-eight-year veteran from the architectural project management world, and he's director of facilities planning and development for us at the district. Kirby and I have been working very hard in looking at our services, our level of services with our current project manager, who everyone knows as TP G. Parsons. This has resulted in a two-point-four million dollar savings over our costs of two thousand and nine, and we're continuing to work with them to ensure that we get good value out of what we're getting from them. Lastly, I wanted to mention that at the May board meeting, Parsons recommended that we approve some utility work at the Trinity River East Building. You might remember that this work was around sewer lines that we were doing. We have a sewer line that's ninety feet deep underneath the building that we're building. Since your approval, my internal team decided that we were gonna do a little bit more due diligence on this, and we went and met with our good friends over at the city to discuss why we should have to perform such expensive work. And when we agreed to do this some years ago, the cost was something like a hundred thousand dollars, but again, you approved eight hundred thousand dollars of expenditure in the May meeting. The bottom line is that we don't have to do this work, and we're not gonna spend the eight hundred thousand dollars. So just a little extra due diligence ends up having a big payoff. Before I leave you tonight, I did wanna just real brief show you some of the projects that are not only completed but ongoing around the district, and I'll just point to a couple of things on these slides. The big thing district-wide is we're really focused on safety and security, and we have a number of things under the safety and security that you'll see that we're very focused on. You know plenty about Trinity River Campus, I won't focus there. Next slide, please. At the South Campus, we're in the process of doing remodels at four buildings there. At the Southeast Campus, we have our new classroom wing that's coming online to be complete in the fall. At Northeast, we have the NBSS, which stands for North Business Social Science Building Renovation that we are kicked off and starting, and that's exciting for that campus. And lastly, but not least, at the Northwest Campus, we are installing a modular building for our early college. So we can talk more about any of these projects. For the new board members, I look forward to sharing more information with you guys tomorrow. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Nina. David?
Thank you very much. In the academic affairs area, the coordination across the district, every summer we engage in a series of projects and employ full-time faculty members to do special projects and studies for us during the summer. One of the issues that we confront in 2014 is accreditation by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools. And one of their areas of focus is about assessment, assessment of instruction and assessment of student learning. So we have a lot of projects going on this summer by faculty members on assessment. I'll also be responsible for the development, creation of an academic master plan across the district, and I'll be working very closely with Nina, who's, who didn't say but is going to be working during this coming year on the facilities master plan, the revisit. The last one we had was approved by the board in two thousand and four, so it's time for that to begin again, to be renewed. But the basis for that stems from the academic master plan, and that's a review of all of the programs on all of the campuses all across the district. We'll be looking at those programs that are low-enrolling programs to determine whether or not they may be shifted over to continuing education, whether they need assistance so they can enroll more students, serve more population in the county, or whether those programs may need to be sunsetted and any full-time faculty in those programs retrained for instructional duties in other program areas. I would talk to you a good bit about the work that we're going through on developmental education, but that's going to, uh, overlap on some conversation that Joy Gates is going to talk with you about on developmental education. One of the real focuses you've heard a number of times tonight is about student success, student access and success. And so we're doing a lot of work in the developmental education program all across the district to better prepare the students to be more successful as they pursue their college career and to be, to be better able for us to generate completers at the end of the program, and you've heard tonight why it's important for our completion numbers to be better than they have been. I would also tell you that just this past week, we received notification from the federal government that our workforce development corporate training area has received a one-point-eight million dollar training grant to work with business and industry in the defense business. And in, in Tarrant County, as you know, a lot of business and industry here is related to the defense industry. So we'll be training and retraining people in all parts of the county who are engaged in the defense industry.
Thank you, David. Dr. Gates Black?
Thank you, Chancellor. As you all have heard tonight, we are doing a lot of work to help our students to be successful, and it's gonna take all of us to get the job done. So I am really grateful to be able to have some help in that respect. I'd like to introduce Mr. Rick Garcia. Rick has joined us as the Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success, and I could not be happier. He brings to us a great wealth of experience, first of all, in the public school systems, and then most recently with the Dallas County Community College District as an associate dean, working in the Richland College Collegiate High School. He's also been a dean of student success, and most recently, an executive dean of college readiness, which is developmental education and mathematics. So if you see what I'm talking about, how everything meshes together with the work that we're going to be doing, and we're glad that Rick is here to help me do that. As the chancellor said, we are really proud to be a part of the Achieving the Dream Initiative, a national initiative that focuses on helping students to be successful in community colleges, specifically students of color and low-income students. This is a program that began through the Lumina Foundation in two thousand and four, and certainly the Houston Community College District, Austin, several in Dallas, Alamo, and most others have already been a part of this, but we're doing everything at the right time because it seems to all be coming together for us. So we're real excited about that. Other things that we are doing to help students to be successful, certainly in the fall semester, we are going to initiate some really important changes that the chancellor alluded to. We are going to require remediation. That means that when new students come to us, first-time in college students, they are no longer going to be able to postpone their remediation. We're going to require them to begin taking their developmental courses the first semester. We're not gonna require that they take every course as developmental, but that they begin the developmental sequence. We're also going to require them to have an assigned advisor, and we're gonna require that they meet with their advisor at least twice per semester. And we're working with the advisors and counselors to create an overall interaction plan of how they're going to work with these students, utilizing the new modes of communication that these students are, are accustomed to. We are also implementing an early alert and mandatory attendance process so that we make sure that developmental students, they can't learn if they're not in their, in their classes. And we wanna make sure that if a student is having difficulty, that faculty are able to connect them with their advisor and identify resources to help them to be successful. And then lastly, we're implementing a transition to college success course. This is a course for any student at this point who requires developmental remediation in at least two areas. It's a wonderful learning frameworks course that is really beneficial to students. They're utilized across the country, and the data shows that students, when students are in developmental courses and they are also taking this learning frameworks course, they are much more successful because it gives them so many of the basic skills that they're going to need early on in their academic career. Another thing we've done to support this is we have created a new council for the college, a student success council, and it's comprised of instruction, faculty, staff, anyone who is involved in the, the business of helping students to be successful. And this is gonna be our venue for continuing to talk about best practices and share the work that's happening on each of the campuses. Members of the college leadership, most recently, one, a couple of the presidents, myself, Dr. Wells, visited Texas Tech College. Again, we're talking about how we can enhance our collaboration and partnership with that institution. And then lastly, we held a breakfast with superintendents at the Trinity River Campus to talk about how we could enhance our relationships, the college readiness of students, and overall partnerships with them. So we're doing a lot of things, and everything, everybody has to pitch in, so.
Thank you, Joy.
That's very good.
Thank you. The next person in the line is Mark McClinda. Mark?
I would like to share with you some of the great work that our financial aid people do, and I think you, everybody should feel very proud about this. Our financial aid department processed nearly forty-three thousand FASPAs for the year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten. That was forty-one percent more than the previous year. That's an enormous amount. More than twenty-eight thousand of these students ended up being enrolled in TCC. Over twenty thousand students received nearly seventy-four point seven million dollars in disbursement of aid. Forty-eight point three million dollars were dispersed to sixteen thousand Pell Grants, and we had sixteen point three million dollars dispersed to forty-seven hundred Stafford loan recipients. I think this is an incredible thing to do in, for this geographic area.
Thank you, Mark. Everybody knows that access means money, and financial aid is, is very, very important to everybody. The next person in the line is somebody who's new to us. He doesn't have a report tonight. Reginald, if you would stand up. Reginald Gates is new to Tarrant County College District. He's a vice chancellor for, vice chancellor for Communications and External Affairs, and Reginald comes to us directly from the Dallas Black Chamber of Commerce. He was there fourteen years as the CEO of that organization. Before that, he was in Fort Worth as the CEO of the Fort Worth Metropolitan Black Chamber of Commerce. So for eighteen years, he's been on the hot seat. He's worked a lot with elected officials at all levels, local, state, national level throughout, so we'll be calling up on his expertise to help us with all of the wonderful challenges that we have at Tarrant County College, and he will be the liaison between the, the board and the college. And some of you have already gotten to know him a little bit through the big email he sent you that you couldn't open. Yes, what are you gonna do about that? You know? But we, we have a fix for that. So Reginald, welcome. We're glad to have you here. Okay, Ms. Maria Shelton is next. Maria?
The peanut gallery was just saying that we need more memory. Actually, what we're going to do, and this is not- Actually, what we're going to do, and this is not part of my presentation, is we're going to put those files on a server so that you can link to it and pull them down. But, I have three initiatives to speak to. One of them is the development or the implementation of a, of an instructional technology group. We have not had instructional technology here at the college. We've had the information services and all the other technical areas. But, the implementation of an instructional technology group will allow us to work with faculty to integrate technology into instruction to meet the needs of the digital learners. Most of us are not digital natives, we're digital immigrants. And so, that's why sometimes you'll hear an instructor saying, "I don't want them to have laptops, and I don't want them to have smartphones in class." They'll be copying and sending answers to each other. Well, we've got to get used to it. You know, that's, that's the way the new group learns, and that's what we'll have to deal with. So, we will, that will not require hiring any new people or any new money this year. We will use instructors as content experts, and then pair them with technical people so that they can learn how to develop those kinds of lessons. It'll also allow us to address the learning styles of many of the students that don't learn in traditional ways that we did, which is another facet of providing student access and success. One of the other, one of the other initiatives will be the combination of the records management group. Right now, every group, every administrative group in the colleges does, we scan records, we file them, and we retrieve them, but we don't do it on any kind of consistent basis. So, the combination of these groups will allow us to not only do that on a consistent basis, but to develop some policies. I don't know, I, I don't know how many of you know how long you should keep certain emails, and when you should destroy them, or know that if you keep them, then they're discoverable. But, those are the kinds of things we'll be able to do when we combine these groups. The final thing is the development of a specifically technology website for all of our groups, and our groups, all of the, the technical support groups, so that if somebody wants to know if the network is down, they'll be able to go to that, that site, know that the network is down, know what the expected outage is. If you want to know how to request video, or you want to request audio, or you want to know how to convert a file from a PDF, and I think you all have files with PDFs, if you wanted to know how to convert a file from a PDF, from a Word document to a PDF, all those instructions will be there. That is being worked on now, and I'm hoping that by September 1st, it will premiere.
Maria, while you're there, I'm sorry, you need to be so loud. At your places, each one of you has a packet of mail, and one of the things you will have in there when you get home, if you read it, will be a letter from a disgruntled student talking about his inability to get the courses he wanted at the time he wanted them. And we get that a lot, because students will get up at 11 o'clock at night so that they can make sure they're right there to sign on at midnight on the first day of registration so that they can get what they need. Please know that Ms. Shelton has spoken with that student, and she has told him what to do. Now, he got the courses he needed after all, but I want you to tell the board members why that happens, and why we can't fix it.
And we can fix it, but we can't fix it using the processes and procedures that we use right now. Tarrant County College has unrestricted registration, which means when the, when the switch flips at 2:00 in the morning, everybody can register. So, you can imagine if we've got 26,000 students, and everybody knows that if I'm first, I get to register, you can imagine what happens. And the server says, "I can, I can, I can't." And when it gets to "I can't," you know, it freezes up, we have to bring it down and bring it back up. So, we have talked about this in KELD meeting, and talked about it with some of the admissions and records people. And one of the solutions to that is a managed registration. And some of you probably remember, back in the day, you know, the registration was by last name, or by social security number, by ID number, and that's not what we do. But, managed, some form of managed registration where we can use selected categories to, to register at certain times will help alleviate that problem, and that's what a group is investigating right now. But, Mr. Mister Person that called, I, I did, I mean, that wrote, I did call him back. His problem was solved, and he actually, I actually tried to offer him a job because he had his MCSA, he had a lot of IT certifications, but he said he was busy right now, but he, he'd get back with me.
Can, can you not limit the number of users on the server and, and reject those and keep the server going?
We could, we could bring that down, but how do you make that fair?
No, no, I, I mean, don't bring it down, just if you're getting hits on the server, say, 15,000 people try to hit it, you take the first, however many you can handle, 1,200 or whatever, and then somebody else tries to come in, you lock, and you, you lock them out and say, "Okay, I have 1,200 users, I'll put you in a queue." And you don't get in, so you don't mess them, mess with the other one until that queue falls through and you get everybody in.
There are so many hitting it. Sometime, the first four hours of registration, we had something like, like 1,000 people registering at a time, not getting in the queue. So, what happens right now is it brings it down. That, that is one method we can do for managed registration. But, probably a system where we either use students who are closest to graduating, or specialized students, like nursing students, maybe, maybe who need specialized programs might be a more equitable way to do it. But, we're, we're considering several models.
Thank you, Maria. Presidents. Dr. Carey, you ready? You next? Ernest, you want to go? Who's, who's going first? Go, go ahead, Judith. Okay, Dr. Thomas is going first.
I feel like someone behind me.
I got your back.
Yeah, look at it lying. They've got to keep each other honest, huh?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Good evening, President Hudson, members of the board. You have before you the five initiatives that are occurring at South Campus. So, in the interest of time, I won't read through them, but I do want to just say that each of these initiatives are guided by what Chancellor Hadley has talked about in terms of strategy. Our strategic objectives are to, in fact, increase students' access and to take a proactive approach towards supporting students, and particularly, first-time in college students so that they can be successful. These students are, as you know, admitted on an open access base, so we take them where they are and get them to where they need to be. The first objective, and you can see the first three objectives are guided by, or funded by, external funding. And I wanted to thank Jackie Mackey for all the support she's given to my team in helping to procure these funds. The PAVE program is really a collaborative effort between South and Northeast Campus, and PAVE stands for Pathways and Vorges in Education. And the program is designed specifically to work with those students that have not done well, or scored low on the Accuplacer in three areas, math, reading, and writing. We're taking a interdisciplinary approach in learning communities, and what we find is that in learning communities, students not only retain the information, but they're also retained in school. We'll be dealing with the curriculum, and we'll be looking at contextual learning. Contextual learning in the sense that the themed curriculum will allow for students who may not be interested in math, or becoming a theoretician in math, but need math for a related discipline or a related career area. The next program is Accelerated Summer Bridge Program. It is also based upon an interdisciplinary approach. We're looking specifically at reading, and looking at those students that scored, missed the Accuplacer cutoff score by at least five points. And we're taking an interdisciplinary approach in that we understand that reading is really the fundamental. It is the basic skill that you have to have so that you can excel in any of the other disciplines. So, what we'll be doing is, working with students, we'll do a diagnostic work of those students and what they need. They may not need everything. They may need specific instruction on comprehension and decoding of words. We'll work on them on that, and then they'll be doing writing exercises at the same time, because there's a relationship between reading and writing. The third initiative has to do with us developing, further developing our welding program. We were able to procure 10, $100,000 to buy equipment so that we can advance students in the area of welding. And as you all know, this is a high-demand career area. We're really excited about our dual-credit technical program. We'll be working with Fort Worth ISD and providing students instruction in electronics, and also with the Everman Independent School District, providing courses in automotive. And the last initiative has to do with developing a dual-credit academy with Fort Worth ISD, specifically, working with O.D. Wyatt, Dunbar, and Poly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ernest. Dr. Carey?
Chancellor Hadley, President Hudson, and members of the board. Many years ago, I remember a college professor saying to a group of educators, "You've long heard that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink." And then, he paused and said, "You can if you give it enough salt." And that's, that's really what we're talking about here. We're talking about student success, ways to do it, different things that entice our students, to make education more interesting, make them want to learn. We have, you have before you our specific projects, several projects that we're doing, and I will just give you a couple of points about those, extra points maybe. One of our, two of our projects actually come from our Technical Division, Business and Technology Division, and they relate to bringing students in and giving them an experience at our campus that will allow them to see what college is all about, see what the world beyond, where their lives are at this point. One is called the Tech Prep Summer Academy, Engineering Academy, and this is our third summer for it. It's for grades seven through 10, and the first two summers, we've had 200 participants, and this summer, the third summer, we have seven, 75 students enrolled the first session, and we'll have at least that number, 75 to 100 the next. This gives the students an opportunity to interact with each other, to interact with our engineering faculty, to hear guest speakers, to have hands-on experiences about what you do in engineering, what kinds of skills you need. They have an opportunity to get on computers, to learn, to see some of the end products of engineering. This is, again, you hear the name Jackie Mackey over and over. Surely, she's going to get a huge raise because all of our funded, huge, probably some of our money, huge projects are thanks to the efforts that this young woman puts in in scouting these, you know, the, the funds available that we get that then can put on these wonderful projects. The goal is, in the Tech Prep side, is for the students, while they're still in high school, to get involved in engineering-type courses so that when they transition to Tarrant County College, they bring college credit with them. Then, University of Texas at Arlington is also connected with this in a very strong way. They know that once they get our engineering transfer students, that they're going to come into their engineering programs and never blink, they go right on through the program. The second one is called First Tech Challenge, and this is really, it's something new, it's the first time for us. It's funded by Bell Helicopter, and it brings in high school students to interact, again, with our faculty, with students, with outside speakers. They provide resources and personnel for students to learn all about robots, but not just about from, from the design all the way to the implementation and see them in action. But, the goal is to then go on to local, regional, maybe even worldwide competition for, with whatever type robots that they have created. It's interesting, it's fun. More than that, they learn to apply what they've learned in their science courses, mathematics, putting it together in English, and whatever. The students in these groups are underserved, they are students who are disadvantaged, and they are turned on, and they are doing beautifully, and then they go back, and those in high school translate real success in their high schools, and then they come to us. The final one is our continuing ed, through our Continuing Education Program. It too is a summer bridge that works with folks to bring, with, with students who come in and are pursuing a GED degree. The thought being, once you get those skills, then you can transition on into our credit program. Then, that means they can transition again on into the world of work successfully and begin earning a living in a way they haven't before. This may not look like salt to you, but it sure does to me.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Larry.
Certainly made me thirsty. President Hudson, board members, Mrs. Hadley. I think my thunder has been stolen. One of the items that I wanted to talk about is the partnership that we have with the South Campus. And again, I'd like to thank Jackie Mackey for the work that she did to get this $1.5 million to help us, help students who did not pass the three areas of, of the TSI, the reading, writing, and math, establishing the learning communities and then helping them to be successful. This is an exciting project for us, and I think we're one of five colleges in the state of Texas who got this grant, so we're, we're really excited about that. The other one is one that Mrs. Hadley was mentioning. She challenged the faculty members, as we were developing the strategic plan, to come up with some ideas for student access and success. And I'd like to recognize Kevin Harper, one of my faculty members, who, and, and the other one was Cheryl Hamilton. They took it very, very seriously, went back to our campus, put together a committee, and they worked for several days and put together a plan that Mrs. Hadley has attached. And I'm not going to, they came up with 11 points of possibilities for, for helping students succeed. And if you have trouble falling asleep tonight, you can read these and, and be proud of them as I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Let me add to Heda before you come up, that of all the things that are going on, I, I guess this is one of the most exciting ones, Kevin. Thank you so much, and thanks Cheryl for both of your leadership. And this is a good time for me to ask the members of the JCC to stand so that our board members can see you, and especially our new board members. And let us thank you. For our new board members, there are 10 of these faculty members who are elected by their peers on their campus to be their leaders, and they meet with us. The, the board, some years ago, gave them the, the authority or the power to, to meet directly with the chancellor, and for a few years now, we have invited them to meet with all of the college executive leadership team, and they have worked very, very tirelessly, untiringly, I should say, with us, as we work through the strategic plan. They were here all along, every step of the way, so they had great input into that. I'm going to let each one of them tell you who they are, which campus they're on, and I'm going to start with their leader, and he can tell you who he is and all of that, so. John, you're it.
I'm John Crawford. I'm an accounting instructor on the South Campus, right here in the JCC. My president, Lightyear, is not here tonight, he's in class. It's just important. Thank you, Brian. Ernest, guys, computer science, information technology, Southeast Campus. Garrison Henderson, the elect, is former office PhD, teaching at Southern.
Thank you.
Jamie Miller, geology instructor at Trinity River, and the president-elect. And our president, Sophia Garcia, was here at an engagement.
And I'm Kevin Harper on the Northeast Campus. I teach health and physical education. And our president-elect isn't here either, but she was here earlier, her name is Andrea.
Good evening. My name is Ayesha Malone. I teach speech communications on the Northwest Campus, and I am president-elect, and our president is Jay Green. Could I be your time?
Thank you, faculty. Dr. Fulcher?
I'll be very brief. We are excited at the Trinity River Campus with the collaboration among our units. The Continuing Ed Unit has sought and been approved for giving the GED test, and that was inspired by one of the students you saw on the film. He came to us the first week that we met him, and he said- He came to us the first week that we met him, and he said, "There are people who need the GED, and we want them to come to the central location." And so the students helped us get busy on that one. The Continuing Ed Unit is also working very hard with the interpreting, the Sign Language interpreting program. You saw a piece of that on the film, where we had the imagination celebration at our campus, and we had 400 deaf children from across the state on campus for two days, working with instructors to help them experience art, but also to learn concepts that tie directly to the curriculum of the state for high school graduation. And so we were really pleased with that. The other thing that I will tell you about is the completion celebration that we had. We had our first full year of dual-credit. And we were so proud of the students, they worked so hard, and they didn't, any of them see themselves as college students. And so we decided to have a party for them and their families, and just applaud them for being college students. And that night, we didn't know who would come, and the room was packed. We had grandmothers, we had little siblings. It was fantastic. The faculty were there, and they introduced the students, and gave them a certificate of achievement of their first college class. And we realized that half the people in the room did not speak English. And so Robert Munoz, our CE vice president, stood up and explained to the families what was happening. Of course, they knew very well what was happening. They were very, very proud. And I have to tell you that two of the grandmothers have enrolled in the CE class.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tahita.
Good evening, Mrs. Hadley, and board members. We have a lot of activity going on on the Northwest Campus. There's no moss growing there, I want to point that out. But I wanted to highlight two special programs. First, the fact that we've been approved to offer the Early College High School. We'll be the first in Tarrant County to do that. It's a partnership that we have with Lake Worth ISD. As you well know, Northwest Campus serves eight different public school districts, and we have lovely partnerships with each one, and they're all different. Lake Worth is a very small school district, and it was a perfect district to work with on an early college start. So we're piloting it this year. It took effort on the part of the vice presidents, the deans, faculty, staff, to make it happen, and district support as well. The students have already started two days ago in the Summer Bridge Program that will be in the Early College High School. Tahita talked about the parents and the families' involvement when we had meetings to decide on what next steps would be. All of the parents were there, and as Tahita mentioned, some grandparents and some neighbors. And it's really exciting, we took 46 students, we intentionally, we wanted to start with 30, ended up with 46, and we have approximately 100 on a waiting list. We're optimistic that this will go well, and that we will be able to expand the Early College High School to other districts as well. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Alva. Thank you. Any questions, board members? We've kind of told you more than you needed to hear tonight, I guess, maybe. But I thought you would enjoy hearing about all these wonderful things that this great staff are doing. And there are other members in the audience, of course, you heard just from the Kelp members, but all of the support staff members that all of us have, all help, they all pitch in, they all do their part, along with the faculty. I will tell you that as soon as Larry and I can get our schedules together, we're going to be meeting to look at the proposals, Kevin, that your faculty group has come up with. And my main goal when we meet is going to be determining how we can help you overcome the cons. Okay? We know you know how to do the pros, we want to get any kind of negative things in the way, we want to remove those for you, because we're very excited about that. Board members, finally, the last thing.
Let me just say how much I appreciate your dedication, and all that you have done on behalf of our students. Those are the kind of people we need, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Winnet. The final thing that I have is that you don't meet in July by board bylaws. However, there is seldom a July that goes by that there isn't something special that you need to do, and this year is no exception. And we really need to have a board workshop that will carry you for the full day. And so I'm asking you if you can meet on Saturday, July 31st, here at the Mayon Center from like, probably 8:30 to 4:00 o'clock, on Saturday, July 31st.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
I have a conflict, I maybe could come in the morning, maybe.
Until around 2?
I have a conflict between 11 and 2.
Between 11 and 2, okay. Does anyone else have a conflict?
I'm scheduled not to be available for any of that time.
Okay.
I'll see what I can do for that.
Okay. Tell you what we'll do, we'll send you another date. Do I have another question, though, Madam Jones? Yes.
The August meetings, can I have a sketch of those?
Well, Nancy Chang tells me that based upon the preliminary information that we have, you're not going to need to go through that series of meetings as you've gone before, because they're expecting the tax, the tax, not the rate, but the value, the appraised values, to be less than, and that, so you won't have to go through those three or four meetings that you normally do. And so we can do the workshop in August, if that turns out to be the best time. I assumed that Saturday would be the best day to get you here all day, but whenever we do it, I need you all day. And so we'll look at another date.
It's May.
Okay. All right. In the meantime, as things come up, we'll keep you posted.
Okay, yeah, I can work with you, and we can kind of get a date set together.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hadley. I would like to make a couple of comments before we adjourn. First of all, I'd like to say that I really appreciate the dedication that Louise, Ms. Appleman, has shown over the last two years as president of the board. I know it takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of time, pay is great, right? And we owe her a debt of gratitude for that, and I really, really do appreciate it. I also would like to say that I appreciate the honor that you've bestowed upon me, and would like to tell you a little bit about how I see the board operating in the future. I don't see myself sitting in this chair for every meeting over the next year. I believe the job of the president of the board is not to control the board or control the meeting, but my job is to maximize the effectiveness of the board and of each individual member. And I will be calling on individual members to chair meetings over the next years. I would like to see this chair rotated, I would like to see every board member in it. Also, I would like to see a formal definition of the role of all of the officers, and I would like to see an executive committee or each member sit in the seat wherever the president would sit, and do the job of president for at least one month. Because I think that we're all dedicated community citizens, we're all concerned about the college, we're all concerned about all those students out in the community that we know that we can have an impact on their life. We can make a difference, and we can decide whether or not they're going to make it in this life, or whether they're not. We have that opportunity. It takes time. I asked someone in San Francisco, "How much time does it take to be a member of the Board of Trustees?" And they say, "On the average, 110 hours a month." I think it takes a little more than that, and I'm going to be asking for individual board members to work with me as a team, not to look at me, to do everything that a board president does. I want to share that responsibility, and I want, by the end of the first year of my term, I would like for it not to make any difference who's sitting behind this position next to our chancellor, who does a great job, by the way, that any one of us can do a great job, because all of us have the college's interest in mind. And I think that's my goal, to make sure that everybody is equipped to do the job that needs to be done. I would like to welcome our two board members, and let you know that we're getting out early tonight. Because of me, so I'm long-winded, right? But the night that I was sworn in, that I was sworn in, or whatever.
Sworn in.
Yeah, it was after midnight, I think, when I got here. We had a long meeting. I brought my wife with me, and I said, "You know, it's going to take very long, it's a board meeting." So, yeah, she doesn't come back with me anymore. She doesn't believe me. But I really appreciate the honor that you've bestowed upon me. I really look forward to working with you, and I know that we will be a great team, because we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but we're ready for those challenges, we will meet those challenges, and I look forward to it. Now I'll ask the other officers, Kristen, would you like, do you have something you'd like to say before we depart?
I'll let you be the long-winded one today.
All right. Thank you very, thank you. Mr. Greenhill, Mr. Carter? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.